When you see mine, you.
It's interesting because.
I put a lot on our plate for next year.
Well, yeah, you're like one, two, one, two. I'm like, oh, my God.
But you need some balance.
That's why I wanted to put comments.
By the way, I only had one, four, because everything on that list is worth being on the list, right?
Yeah, I think I had maybe one, four as well.
Yeah, maybe two.
I think when I look at, I don't know how you do this out of there.
Oh, crap. It's what don't you do, right?
We might have to double the size of the board of selectmen, just for three years.
Or just double their workload.
Yeah, we'll double your pay.
Well, you have to do that, too.
Yeah, I know. As I'm going through that, I'm like, wow, I'm putting a lot of one-twos, one-two, one-two.
Yeah, the extra pay would be great.
Yeah, it would.
But you know.
Especially double.
That's actually.
Double it, that would double it all.
Doubles, there you go.
Given the amount of scrubbing that's gone on, I would hope that they were all ones and twos, right? That all the.
Imagine the headline.
Okay, gentlemen, it's seven o'clock.
Any word from Marcy for tonight?
She's late on the train. She pinged me and said she'd be here late, but she's coming. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 2nd, 2014 Board of Selectmen meeting. I hope all of you enjoyed your Labor Day holiday.
Yes, we did.
I was driving back from New York, and the weather on Sunday was pretty threatening. Saturday or Monday wasn't a bad day after all things considered. Tonight, we'll open with liaison reports and public comment, if any. We'll hear from our town manager for his report. We'll have discussion on some proposals for the island in front of, near CVS, near Town Pizza. The Redding Garden Club has some proposals for adoption island that we'll review. As part of that, a discussion, a related discussion on a tree removal. We'll get a report from the Human Relations Advisory Committee. We'll have a hearing for a liquor violation for Ricky's Liquor, 214 Main Street, sale to a minor. At nine o'clock, we'll discuss and close the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on September 29th. And we'll also vote the warrant articles for that same special town meeting. You'll get a sense of where the board is on some of these topics, as well as, hard to believe, take a look at the warrant for the subsequent town meeting in November. Closing out the evening, we'll talk about our preparation for the financial forum on September 10th and speak, finalize the FY15 town manager goals. So it's a pretty full agenda, and we'll finish the evening with approval of our minutes. Just to open the evening, a couple of points. I did attend a, as some of you may know, I'm on, I am representing the Board of Selectmen on the Redding Municipal Schools Naming Committee, which had reformed to entertain three nomination candidates for ostensibly a field or a building or a hallway or a room. The group met, I think, certainly two times, if not more, and the consensus was that the current policy as written at the school level is inadequate from a clarity and a independent assessment of the candidates. There's very little material in terms of how do you review the candidate, what are the minimum criteria, how do you scale it, how do you rank A versus B? By way of example, one of the candidates had a single page form the entirety of their nomination. One of the other candidates had, I want to say, 35 pages. So just merely in formulation, it was unclear how to assure that the nominees were best represented by their sponsors. Joanne King and myself took the task to go out and propose a template based on best practices at other schools. We went back with a package to this third meeting of the committee, and there is now at least a straw man of a review process for nominations that dictates the length of the report, of the nomination, the content that should be contained within it, the criteria that should be considered. And most of all, this is not for necessarily the naming of a building, but rather a nomination to effectively an educator Hall of Fame. The group left as a next assignment and agreed to take on the task of field naming and facilities naming, which would be built upon the existing foundation and amplify some of the criteria that's already, that are already built, already in place for this, this higher honor of a facilities or a field naming. So that's been pretty rewarding. I mean, schools are represented, the school committee's represented, members at large are represented, obviously the board of selectmen's represented, and it's pretty effective. I thought it was a pretty effective use of the group's time. For three or four hours' work, we've really gotten a lot of work done. That's the bulk of my remarks. Kevin, any, any comments?
I have no comments right now, Mr. Chairman.
Dan?
No liaison means to report, Mr. Chairman. Just a promise to the board that the revised 2014 Town Manager Review Form will be emailed to the board this week. I don't have it done yet, but it will be done this week.
Very good. John?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Actually, two sort of independent reports back relative to my role with the Recreation Committee. One of them is quite timely in light of what you've been doing, John. I have received some requests to nominate some town properties for naming purposes, and they sought me out because they know that I'm on the Recreation Committee, and these are athletic fields that had come up that are not part of the school property. So, you know, in, in doing a little homework, we find that we, the selectmen don't really have a policy for, you know, for town properties as such. And the fact that this, you know, sounds like all the groundwork has been done, or a lot of the groundwork has been done, let's just put it that way, I'm going to suggest that this board consider engaging an ad hoc committee to create a policy for the Board of Selectmen relative to the naming of town properties and town fields. So, so that's kind of timely, and it, and it sounds like a lot of the work has been, a lot of work is underway, and I think a lot of it will, one will replicate the other, but I think that if we can tonight, I mean, I would certainly volunteer to be involved, but John, you've got a lot of current experience as well, so I just think that it's important for us to create our own ad hoc committee to be able to go forward with those, with those kind of naming proposals, so that people have something to work with.
And in doing so avoids the other problem, which is you have a worthy candidate, but no ready means to evaluate them or others like them.
I can say that on this topic, I happen to have a seat on the, on the Redding Athletic Hall of Fame, and after many years of trying to sort through just such questions, I think two years ago, we put together a kind of a form that matched what we really needed to know, and so when we get a nomination, we would go forward with asking the nominator to complete the form. They wanted to add additional information, that would be fine, and of course, the committee does its own research anyway, but I just think that there seems to be quite an appetite in a lot of different directions here, so I think it's important that the Board of Selectmen institute a policy so that people know where to go with it. So I think that's something we're going to need to do tonight. I'm suggesting that we, you know, agree with the ad hoc committee for this purpose. The other thing that is tied to the Recreation Department is, and I think we're going to hear from a member in the public reports, I was able to make a site visit tied to a request that's going to be coming before us that is more of an extension of something we've already agreed to as a body, and that is, you know, on the grass field behind, kind of behind turf two, you know, out where the, where the discus and shot put guys get their, get their start. There's a proposal that I wanted, there's already lighting out there.
Right.
There's a proposal that another, one more pole going up with the same kind of lighting will just enhance what's going on there for a couple of reasons. Big demand. As you all know, we've heard that the, the Redding Flag Football Organization is just getting, and they work in concert with the Recreation Department, are getting landmark applications to play. And so by doing this, it'll create two small fields, you know, and really be able to accommodate everybody, and secondarily, it will create, the freshmen are out on that field, they don't get to use the, you know, the turf fields, and so it'll actually provide adequate lighting. So I bring that up, I think we're going to hear more about that in the public comment, and it seemed to me to just be an extension of what we're currently doing. You know, it's a pretty simple fix, and the funding is all but taken care of, so, so there's that going on. The last thing in liaison report is, I visited, I have become, as a result of my liaison capacity from the Board of Selectmen, I've become a member of the Board of Directors of Arcasa, and I was at their last regular meeting. And frankly, I, you know, I was a little disturbed by something I heard at my first meeting, that there had been something removed from the Health and Wellness Program at the middle schools, and felt like that was a topic that Arcasa should have a discussion about, or a discussion ensued, and Superintendent Doherty, who, you know, would really have the proper information to fill in the blanks, was unable to attend, but he's being asked as the superintendent by Arcasa to explain, you know, what we've done in substitution for the thing that we've taken away. I mean, as all of us know, there's a huge concern around the work of Arcasa and the progress, you know, it's not where we want it to be yet, may never be where we completely want it to be, but every step we can take is important. I can also say that a big topic of discussion at that same meeting was the medical marijuana zoning. They reviewed that, had a good discussion about it, and voted unanimously to endorse the program that's currently on the table. So those are the, kind of the two things that were going on at Arcasa. So that's, ends my report.
John, was there an opinion voiced by the school committee in response to that change? Did they take a part in the position?
Well, there was only one, there was one member of the school committee there that felt like there wasn't enough data to really respond, and I understand that. I mean, it wasn't an agenda item, it wasn't an item that I made an agenda item at the end of the meeting, and so in fairness, the representative from the school committee, who also happens at the moment to be the current chair, the president, has taken steps to inform Dr. Doherty of our concerns and, you know, ask for an explanation. And so I know all that'll be forthcoming, so.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen. Public comment. Mr. McFadden.
Yeah, if you could just move that.
Actually, Carl, if you don't mind if we just hold on this till any other, any other discussions, not regard, regarding any of the liaison reports, any other public comment? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'll wait, I'll yield a college bigger than I am.
Carl, you get the baton again.
Thank you. And he's better weapon. Carmichael, 338 South Street. Just real quick, John Fiedler wanted to be here, but he's spearheading the, the street fair, it's a big meeting tonight, so he couldn't be able to be here. One of the things, as Stolzey mentions, the Saturday night's program, when it came before you a month or so ago, is just exploding, we've got almost 600 kids, and we just don't want, you get to a certain point where you just don't want to say no. And what we're looking to do is we're trying to find additional field space, which everyone's there. If everyone can, hi, Marcy, if you're aware of, and I apologize for blocking this, I'm not good with this type of stuff, this is turf two, okay? You have lights that are lighting up, the telephone poles that are lighting up turf two, and then there's two poles here that I believe the Army Corps of Engineers did that light up. This field is actually lined for the freshman football, Pup Warner and soccer, et cetera. It only lights maybe about 20 yards, thereabouts, and then you have the shot put area, discus area, and then right on the other side is what we'd be looking to do, is put a pole right here. We can't, on these poles here, they're, the Army Corps was able to put them on the back side and shine them there. For whatever reason, they thought they weren't able to do, put a light here, because if they did, they'd have to tie it into this pole. So when this field would be lit up, that just one lamp would be lit up, and they weren't able to. I'm not sure, that's what we're told by the light department came on. So what we want to make you aware of, what Mr. Fiedler wanted to do, and we've been communicating with RMLD, and they're very anxious to do this, is just put one light pole on the other side of the, the discus area, which would shine here, which would give us an extra 100 feet of width, so instead of being just 25 yards, it would be half a field, shall we say, would be lit up, so that we don't have to place the kids all the way down in castine, because it kind of takes away from the environment. So instead of using castine for one field, we can just put them right there, and that way we're able to, we'd have about 12 fields going on Saturday nights.
And Carl, that area you're pointing to, the area to the, closer to Birch Meadow, that's already lit? This is kind of a dead spot in the middle of the field? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, you remember like the little softball field that's right here?
Yeah.
That's, that's the area, it's all dead.
So you're filling in a hole that's been there for years?
Exactly, yeah.
You said two things, pole and light. Can this be addressed by merely the addition of incremental lighting, or do you need this to pull?
No, the way the, this pole here, the distance is just too far, they need, RMLD needs to put a, they, and they said they could actually just put a temporary pole up there, and then they just put the same exact lights up there that Mr. Fiedler would be able to do. It's going to take approximately two to three weeks to get the lights. What Mr. Fiedler did this afternoon was actually rent a temporary, one of those temporary generators, probably something like the highway, that light up.
So part of 93 is dark now.
Yeah, exactly. So he wants to be able to, he'll light that up temporarily, because, you know, Saturday night, we do, we do start. And this is, you know, this is something I certainly know from my days of coaching Pup Warner, I know Pup Warner would love to have it because they only have the 25 yards. This is a lot more used soccer, a lot of lacrosse, et cetera. So really, what we're looking to do is, is ask is, one additional pole, which would open up, light up another 90 feet, which would take care of all, everyone's needs.
I think it is important to note that we don't, from everything I understand, probably correct me if I'm wrong, we're not going to be seeking. Additional funds, this is really the completion of a program that started through some volunteer work through the Corps of Engineers, and, and with the lighting that, so there's money from the lighting in the Recreation Department who partners with the Flag Football.
Yeah, you know, we're the vendor, but it's a Redding Recreation, it's your program.
Right.
And the revenue coming from that will be able to.
So, you know, I guess at the end of the day, the important thing to note is that we're really not talking about additional funds, we're talking about the completion of a project that didn't quite get finished.
Ninety-five percent.
You know, left us a little bit short, and this adds some permanence to that. My visit, and I spent a lot of time down in those fields, as many of you know, I think it's just a very nice completion piece to what's already been done there, and can be handled without additional funds being.
And calling the general manager, RMLD, has been wonderful, and her staff came out the next morning to take care of, to tell us what would need to be done.
Bob?
I just ask Carl, and just really as a courtesy to the board, I agree with John's comments, it really seems in the spirit or the scope of the original project, just so you all saw this. If had it impacted the neighborhood and was going to be put lights in people's living rooms, we would have had a hearing, but it's nothing like that.
What, what formal action the board has needed to?
I don't think you need to do anything, just really as a courtesy, I thought Carl should.
There's more on FYI.
I think if we had an objection, we'd have to take action, and have a public hearing, but to me, the public hearing has happened already, because this is just kind of the completion of the, of the project, and it's very clear, when you stand down there in the day or the night, you can kind of see that it, it's missing a pole.
So the nighttime discus program is gone.
And, and one of the other things that is somewhat important, but not, is the fact that, you know, the way it is now, when we're, when our activity is going on, this area is pretty dark still, like this is lit up, where, you know, potholes, anyone falling, a little more sympathetic kind of this boot on, you know, the potholes, and they fall in the night, but, you know, it's a lot, I wouldn't say it's a cut through, but a lot of kids are coming from the YNTA, and that we're going to help both light them.
Dana, you have a question?
Yeah, I did, I fully endorse what you want to do, Carl. Just a plea that whenever possible, either the type of light or the direct direction of the light be selected to avoid what's called light leakage.
Yeah.
There's a lot of light leakage from turf, the turf two lights, a part, I mean, that hits people in the face coming down Parkview Road.
It's the shield.
Yeah, but, and maybe the staff can do something about directing those a little differently, so you get more light on the field, less shining up, so that, that's all I have.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Any other public comment before we move on? Now, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Paul Graham, 828 Martin Road. I noticed in the community connection this week, this month, that they showed the completion of the rock-clanging wall at the Birch Meadow School. However, it is not complete because it's not ADA compliant, it does not have handicap accessibility. And when I talked to the Recreation Director, he told me that they ran out of funds, and in my opinion, you should not start something like that unless you have funds to complete it, because we are required to make it handicap accessible, and you well know that I have grants of, from time to time, needs it, and I will fight like hell for it.
Would that have come out of school, school side of the budget?
No, that came out of Recreation.
Was the capital voted by town meeting?
I don't know whether capital was voted by town meeting or not, but I know that now it does not, so.
So is that on school property, or is it on town?
It's on school property.
On school property, but.
I, I don't want to write a letter to 1310 Ashburton Place, that's the ADA, in case you want to know. I've done it two or three times.
Right one to 16 low.
Huh?
Right one to 16 low, right here.
Well, I'm doing it right now, so I'll save you the writing.
Bob? Thank you, Bob.
When I talked to you about this, I don't know, a week or two ago, you were going to go talk to the schools, did you ever need to do that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Because I would agree with you, there's, there's no reason we should have quote-unquote run out of funds. That's not a good reason. Do you talk to John Fiedler about it?
I haven't yet, no.
Okay.
I just thought I'd bring it to the board, and, you know, I think it's a keeping with your policy, you guys have policy from time to time, and I'm sure you don't follow up and everything, but one of the policies should be to make everything ADA compliant.
After construction, this would have been deeded or granted or titled to the school, right?
It's the schools all along, I'm sure, but I don't know the ends and ends of it.
All right, thank you.
There's always that one question of, who owns it? Yeah.
I already have one five seven with the ADA, so.
So have you, have you spoken to somebody in Recreation, but not John Fiedler?
No, John's the only one I've talked to on this, and he said that you'd be running out of funds, so. And when I talked to my daughter about it, she says that's on a chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other public comment?
I think we have public comment.
On the, for the next agenda.
Oh, I hope we're actually on it, thank you, excuse me.
No, not at all. Bob?
I just want to call your attention to one thing. A majority of you, in fact, everyone I heard from can meet next, your next meeting is on the 23rd, so at six o'clock, next door, we'll have an executive session. Just want to make sure you're all, follow, posted, and sent to the address. The rest I have is going to be covered by tonight, I wrote shortly forward. I will say, a couple of us took a walk down to a brand-new business on Haven Street today. Anyone guess what the first day was today for a store that's reopened?
Kitchen Post.
Kitchen Post? Kitchen Post was packed. She had more flowers there from customers and from other businesses welcoming her back. It was really nice. She's got a very nice space, she's been working in there for a couple of weeks to populate it, and it's a great location. She's already found out, just moving down to the other end of the street, it's a whole different clientele. Where she was, she was a destination in the middle of banks. Now she's not necessarily the destination, because there's a lot of the retail businesses around there, she's already feeling in one day the benefit from that, so I thought that was nice. That's all.
Thank you. Marcy, thank you for joining us.
Yes, I would have been here sooner, as I said, my train was delayed.
At this hour, we have a discussion from the Redding Garden, Garden Club regards some proposals around adoption island.
See awards.
Some of the goodies and everything.
Bring food?
No, no, non, non-edibles.
I remember how much food you had, like every time you have that annual event, it's unbelievable.
We do have a nice reception, besides growing plants in a, in a wonderful way that are abundant, we also make great, great desserts. Well, since 1995, the Redding Garden Club, along with the town, in a great partnership, we have cared for nearly 100 island sites in town. People have volunteered to maintain, plant, and design those sites, and some people even have multiple sites, so it's quite a great group of volunteers. And the Garden Club, within our 49 members, we have a small committee that oversees that along with town government. We've had meetings with the town manager, with the town planner, so we try to do it in a strong partnership. This year, on July 25th, I'm looking at all these wonderful gardeners out here, on July 25th, we had another contest to encourage our volunteers that maintain these sites to really upstage how they usually plant or have planted in the past. So 1995, we began, we're almost 20 years old, and tonight, I wanted to tell you that on July 25th, we had six judges representing a variety of people in the community. Dan Ensminger represented the board, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
And we divided into two teams of three each, north and south. They looked at how the gardens were designed, maintained, and conditions of the plants, and gave them all values, made comments, and we made decisions. There, of these 100 islands, there are four distinct categories. There are barrels, and there are many barrels, actually. There are, on the 100 sites, there are 24 barrels in town. Of the 24 barrels, three barrels were chosen first, second, honorable mention. So the president of Garden Club this, this year, with your permission, Anya, will present these awards to those winners. First place was Marilyn Simons, her barrel is down at the depot, it's absolutely beautiful. Second place was the Batshielder Neighbors, and hopefully tonight, Kim Curtis could be with us. An honorable mention is Betty and Jack Walsh, and Betty is not feeling well tonight, so I know she won't be here. Then the next, the next grouping were individuals and families that took care of sites. Tina Lance at Arthur B. Lord Drive in Birch Meadow with the benches, it's absolutely lovely. Second place was my husband and myself, I didn't do that, we're at Hawkins in Maine. And honorable mention is Megan Schaw, Scarebow, Megan just had a baby girl three days ago, so Megan will not be with us tonight. She's at the high school field by the shot put area around the flagpole, she's done a very nice design. The businesses, clubs, and organizations for the second year in a row are the senior center gardeners, Jane Burns, and hopefully Joe is here as well to accept the certificate this year. And second place is RCTV, Gardening with a Hot, it's Janice Hot, Phil Rushworth, and it's right outside. It's the, it's really quite a beautiful garden, if you don't have an opportunity to really look at it, walk around it, it's lovely. And then for honorable mention, Chris Redford is here representing the Crystal Garden Club of Wakefield, and they have planted lovely perennial gardens on the parking lot side around the senior center. And the last category is professional landscapers. We have 10 professional landscapers in town that have donated, again, funds, time, and the maintenance of islands. First place is a brand-new landscaper to town for this year, it's Michael Minahan, and he's down at the corner of Ash and Main across from McDonald's. That fast food place. Second place is Vinnie Shanley, who's also new this year to the program, and Vinnie is the strip garden right out here by Town Hall in front of the parking lot. And honorable mention is Michael Long, which is Long, which is renewal landscaping, and for this garden, he has multiple gardens. This garden is at High and Woburn at the depot. First place, um, not only gets a certificate, but they also get a gift certificate to a garden center from the Garden Club. Well, why not? But we do so appreciate letting all of these wonderful people come tonight so that you know how hard they work. And they truly work hard. It's been a little tricky the past few days because the weather has been either pelting rain, stifling hot. So maybe wait until Friday to take a walk around town. Until they have an opportunity to replenish themselves with, uh, good moist fall air. So Anya, if you wouldn't mind, and if you're here, if you, you please wouldn't mind.
Not at all.
To John, perhaps?
Not at all.
To come up with Anya and Bob, and we can pass out these wonderful gift certificates. The first one is Marilyn Simons. I know Marilyn is here. And, um, then the Bachelder Neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marilyn.
A lot of fun, a lot more of fun.
Second year in a row for Marilyn, too. And, um, and then Betty Walsh, I know, is ill. And then we have, um, the individuals. Oh, thank you, Anya.
You're welcome.
She said, you're going to tell me what to do tonight? Sure, I love to tell people to do. There are thirty-three individual volunteers that do these gardens. And, uh, first is Tina Lance. Thought I saw Tina come in. And, um, then Megan Scarbo with her brand-new baby girl Evelyn. Then we have, um, the businesses and clubs or organizations, you know, things like Girl Scouts and Senior Center and things like that. This is for the senior center gardeners, Jane.
Actually, I'm going to interject right here now because my role with senior center gardens is to drive Joe to Home Depot.
I did see Joe come in.
Our gardeners, Joe Plano, Linda Perry.
And Marilyn Simons. They are actually the gardeners at the senior center.
And the best part of this garden, it's a blended garden. It's, um, flowers and vegetables. So Joe, do you eat those vegetables?
Every chance I get.
Good answer, good answer.
We actually serve, uh, the vegetables at the senior center during lunch. It's tomatoes and fresh peppers, and they're sliced and put out for the residents. And those that are left over, uh, the visitors are welcome to take any extras home with them.
It's great, it's great. And then the beautiful garden right outside the front door is, um, RCTV. Janice Hot is the designer and caretaker, and Phil is in the back there. Everybody knows Phil.
And I have lots of help, all of these people.
Helping. Oh, that's terrific.
Thank you.
Tweet us the birdies.
There are, there are also little ribbons on their signs. And by the way, the town pays for the signs. And which is, is a terrific, uh, partnership again. So, and then with the landscapers, oh, the Crystal Garden Club. Chris Redford is here as, um, a representative of the Crystal Garden Club. And that's on the parking lot side of the senior center. It's perennials and roses. It's lovely. And then we can go to, um, the landscapers. Mike Minahan was having dental work, and I don't think Mike was going to be able to come. And Vinnie Shanley. Nope. And then, um, and, um, Michael Long for renewal. Michael had a busy day with his, his client, so he emailed me at six. I guess he's still digging. And good for him. Let's, let's get the town looking great. But I so appreciate the partnership and look forward to continued partnership. Next year will be our twentieth reunion, anniversary of this program. And we hope to plan something quite spectacular that you all can come to. Thanks again. Thank you very much.
You know, as you drive through Reading, you're greeted by these blasts of color at strategic corners and intersections. And it strikes me, that's one of the most visible and vibrant examples of, maybe it's a, a little bit of a twist, but a public-private partnership. You folks are doing the public work, uh, the private work, and the public is gassing and garnering the benefit of that. It's very much appreciated, particularly from somebody like me who struggles to grow grass. If anyone wants any proof, you can drive by Francis Drive and take a look.
Water, lots of water.
That's the problem. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, yeah.
Next, we will have a hearing on a public tree removal at six forty to six sixty Main Street.
Agreed with the notice?
Please.
Please take notice, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on September second, two thousand fourteen at seven thirty PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts. On the town's request to remove one six-inch diameter zelkova tree located in front of six forty slash six sixty Main Street. Copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the town manager's office, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday from seven thirty AM to five thirty PM. Tuesday from seven thirty AM to seven PM, and is attached to the hearing notice on the website at www.ruddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to six PM on September second, two thousand fourteen to town manager at ci.ruddingma.us.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Unfortunately, our technology not working, so we can't show the anything. Quite unhappy. In your packet over the weekend, hopefully you had a chance to look, there was a few pictures, and everyone knows the location. It's, as you're exiting CVS, it's to the right, right in front of this fellow store. Right now, there's three trees in front of that, uh, space, a little bit of an elevated island, uh, shape in front. And that was all, um, a product of the downtown renovation, the downtown phase one, if you will, improvements. Um, in, in meeting with some of the area businesses and some of the residents, and then subsequently with two of the landscapers, we were discussing an option of, um, making that a little more business-friendly in terms of visibility, but also, uh, business and pedestrian-friendly in terms of a place to sit and congregate. You've seen, the board has seen, um, three different requests in that area for outdoor seating. Only one is still, is being used right now, the bakery. The yogurt store has still not put out their bench. And Grumpy's is still not, uh, open, uh, with the nice path.
Bunradis.
I'm sorry, Bunradis. Grumpy's is open with their one.
Yes, very much open.
Yeah, very much.
For now.
So the idea of having people outside is certainly in that area, certainly a growing one. But each of those three is, uh, assigned, if you will, a specific business. This would be a more generic place. Certainly, if you were doing any kind of, um, passing by, uh, right now, you'll see there's three benches on each side of those, that island, if you will. And there are almost always someone at one of those benches, at least, other than maybe when it's ninety degrees. It's, it's pretty busy. And there's more people walking around with food now, especially if you've just shopped down the street that may not want to sit right in front of the store, or maybe that store is busy. And this would be another area to, to congregate. And the area businesses that I've spoken to, I was able to speak to three out of four in that immediate area. We're all very much in favor of it, and I, I know Peter Sims is here tonight to give you his opinion. The idea being that if we would take out the middle tree, and probably need to do a little pruning on the two end trees, the three trees are, are healthy and have done well. But the middle tree is really in the way of anything else you'd do with that space if you wanted to use it for seating. So one option, and I have two options that I will show the board, is to just allow for more seating by removing the tree, bricking in the center in two different ways, and either putting in long benches, which the current landscaper had in mind, or the woman who designed the entry to Town Hall had a more oval shape, which would allow for more seating, a little bit more informal seating. So I'll show you those two plans in fairness in your packet. And over the weekend, we got a couple of emails from people who didn't want to take the tree down, and you've seen those. And we got a couple of favorable reports today. We actually delivered a message to all the business owners. Was it last week, Peter? I think it was last week. Uh, so everyone had an opportunity to say something. And again, from the informal walking around in the business, you know, community, the idea of having better visibility was pretty high in the. But before I show you the plans, I'd really invite Peter to give you his thoughts on, on this. Peter?
Hi, I'm Peter Sims, Sims Jewelers. For some of you that don't know me, I served as chairman of the Downtown Steering Committee for eighteen years. That was a group that, uh, was town committee, um, public sector and business sector that helped with the renovation and downtown revitalization. Took us eighteen years to get it done, but we finally did get it done. The spot that we're talking about now, actually in front of my store, our group was very aware of trees. And we wanted a lot of trees in the downtown. We traveled to many other towns, made recommendations on what types of trees to put in. Unfortunately, once it got to the state level, things got mixed up. Trees we have now were not the trees we wanted. We wanted taller trees, wispy trees, not trees that would block signs. Any plan that was ever, um, that I ever saw in that area in front of my store in particular always had two trees in it. When the state got a hold of it and ended up doing the plant, three trees ended up there. My business in particular has been there for fifty-six years. Now, when people call my store and say, where are you located? We used to always say, a couple of doors down from CVS, just look for us. Now we say, a couple of dollars doors down from CVS, look for the wall of trees, we're behind it. It's an issue. It's directly affecting me. I know I talked to the Grails, a good hotel, so they weren't able to make it today. It's an issue for them. I guess eventually the idea is for those trees to grow up high enough to be over the signs. Unfortunately, we might all be out of business by the time that happens. So I am definitely in favor of this. I don't mind seeing more seating. We're seeing a lot more foot traffic, thank goodness, now that the Charles Block has been done. People are walking up and down the street. It's not a bad thing to have people sitting out in front of my store in particular. Say I'm greedy, why not? Looking in my window, I don't mind. And I think it's good for the town.
Any other comment?
Are we in the public, uh, comment section of the public hearing?
Yes, we are.
I'd also invite the tree warden to speak. Yes.
Mary Ellen, do you have some comments?
Okay, thank you. Mary Ellen O'Neill, one twenty-five Summer Avenue. I went down and looked at it, and I can see where it does, they're, they're very lush trees. They're doing very well. Uh, I've talked to Mr. Keating, and it, the tree cannot be transplanted. I think that they can definitely be trimmed back and create some more life for the businesses behind. But I also believe in time that these trees will grow higher and will, and so we just have to, you know, that's, that's the way it is with trees. And if you look at the, there's a couple of points with, you look at the island, and you stand in front of it, so the tree that you want to cut down is in the front. The street tree to the left is not doing very well. It has no water source. I'm, I'm, over time, I'm not sure how well any of these trees will do. They have very limited access, root access to water. So we've created an area here that has a lot of access to water for the plants. And so that's why they're doing well down there, and they look so beautiful. And it's very stunning, there's a lot of benches there. I don't see a lot of people out there using the existing benches that we have. And if we cut it wide enough for people to walk through and sit on, we're cutting back plantings that are, that are doing well there. And we're cutting back the remaining land available to the other two trees to receive water over time. I mean, I've had a tree that predated my, um, living in this house. It was a beautiful sugar maple, which was planted in the wrong spot. That wasn't friendly, it was just too trapped by concrete and asphalt, so it, it didn't survive. So I'm interested in these trees all surviving. We have a big tree issue in town, I think, where we're, we have not been funding our trees. We can't keep up. And we're falling behind in addition to a lot of homeowners that are taking down many, many trees. The tree cover in my neighborhood in the last fifteen years has been substantially reduced by, by loss and by, by deliberate cutting down. So I, I would just ask you to be, you know, very careful about taking down a healthy tree and thinking about what we're, what we're losing, what we have, and some other options, like trimming back some of the branches to allow more visibility until the trees grow up and, and, and take care of that problem. Thank you for listening.
Well, the trees, as was mentioned, are zelkova, and that's a variety that, uh, came to popularity and are planted as a lot of street trees in town because they survive very well. They're very aggressive. But they also get very large. And, uh, you're in a confined space there, uh, much better than the tree wells we have, which are very small. But the tree will have a spread of fifty feet and a height of about fifty feet in maturity. So that center tree actually is already touching the other trees. They were planted too close together, uh, for maturity. Looked great six years ago. And, um, but that third tree is now touching the other trees. And, uh, you wa, I, I took a look at the distance between the two end trees. Their outer branches are drip-lined about twenty feet apart, and they're thirty-six feet on center. So, um, I don't know how wide this, uh, area is here. But certainly, as the trees get larger, it'll make a nice canopy in there. I wouldn't necessarily have planted this type of tree here because they are so large and aggressive. A more upright variety like the pears and some of the elms and, and locusts we have there are more suited for streetscapes. But we have them, and they're doing very well. I don't think taking out that one tree, which is smaller, um, is going to harm the other two trees. It's also going to keep that congestion that'll be there that has already started down. So although no one likes to lose trees as much as I do, uh, in this particular instance, they're too large of a variety of tree to be planted in that location. So losing the one tree will, uh, make the other two more visible and, uh, I think will, will serve the trees well.
About two questions from me. You said the drip line is thirty-six feet. Does that imply that as they grow larger, the, uh, that the precipitation will actually be shaded? Be, um, pushed away from the, from the ground? In other words, they'll eventually, uh, prevent any natural moisture from entering the dirt? Is that the nature of the drip line's behavior?
Well, the drip line's the very edge of the tree. So, um, that's going to expand as the tree gets larger. Right now, as, in the, in the future, ten, fifteen years, that whole, um, center area will be shaded. And, uh, but the tree will be able to be trimmed up high enough so that you'll be able to walk underneath and utilize it. The, the distance, on center, the trees are thirty-six feet apart. Ideally, they should be about fifty feet apart. But the thirty-six feet isn't too bad, and you still have a twenty-foot gap between the trees. Point being, there's room for the trees to grow and not be intertwined. The, uh, the one tree to be removed is already started to, um, mingle the branches. They're touching each other. Now, yes, they can be trimmed back. But, uh, what you want to have happen is that the trees be trimmed up as they grow, and then you have a canopy above with plenty of visual space down below.
Isn't the, um, the issue with trees more about the roots? Being in contact with one another in comparison to how big they can grow and how healthy they can get?
Well, they, the roots can get out quite a distance.
Right.
The, uh, school of thought has always, always been that the roots extend out to where, uh, where the drip line is.
Okay.
Okay, but they can also extend out considerably farther, depending on barriers. The more barriers you create, the less root zone you have. And that's why street trees with little two-by-four wells don't do very well. They call them, uh, street coffins because there's no place for the tree to go. And the best thing the town did in this design was to plant the trees in these raised beds where there's no foot traffic, there's no compaction. And, uh, you see how well these gardens have done in town. They're beautiful. The one in front of Town Hall, the one in front of CVS. I mean, these are as good a streetscape, uh, gardens and environments for trees and plant material grows you can have. Now, one of the issues, um, that's being addressed is, uh, there's a, uh, fire hydrant there. And I believe the water department has put a hook up there, uh, to make watering much easier. So that there's a supplemental water source there that wasn't there before and doesn't exist for the other trees.
They haven't done that yet, they almost did. They said, slow down. This is, the other thing I should mention, um, I'll get to it when I show you the two snapshots, but.
but Brian Stowall is the fellow who's adopted this island, if you will, and done a really nice job with it. And he had a lot of interest in making a change for what that's worth, and again, I'll get to his design quickly. Brian's from Eastern Spring Landscape, and then Lori Johnson from Garden Rhythms is the woman who designed the entrance to the town hall that the garden club did a year ago, which came out very nicely. She has a little bit of a different concept. But more important, if you will, than just this, is we walked the whole area of the downtown, and they, between them and Jean Delios and I, have a concept of a master plan to tie all this together, but you have to start here. And the rest of the work would probably begin next spring, because it's really too late in the season to do too much in terms of planning. But a real key, as Bob mentioned, is have accessible water. We do have water that's for four or five hundred bucks available at that spot very easily and very securely. So, you can't just go taking it if you want to. Why that wasn't done in the past, I don't know, but it's not hard. As it is right now, Brian has to bring all the water from his house in order to water that area. So, you can just imagine the effort that that involves, you know, in his pickup truck. Well, yeah, fire truck. So, you know, as we walked around and really thought about some of the areas, until you're on your feet only looking for this reason, you miss a lot of the details around here. The downtown is, no question, is beautiful. In some cases, it's because there's some really nice gardens, and in this area especially. But down there, there's not a lot of tie-in and theme. If you think of the little strip parking lot in front of Christopher's, for instance, there's some dead space. The intersection of Haven and Main, which is now our two main streets, really needs to be improved. Some of it's landscaping, maybe some of it's an arch or some kind of indication that, hey, Haven Street should be a destination. But just so you know, this is part of a larger discussion that you're going to hear more about over the winter leading into the spring. This is just the beginning. And this just seemed like a standalone project that regardless of anything else did or didn't happen, this can still happen and have a penultimate.
I would think, too, that it's still somewhat in the design phase. So, anytime you remove, you add hardscape into that center, it's going to affect the two remaining trees to a degree. So, I would think, you know, all working together, there's a compromise that can be made. But it, you're taking root zone away in one area, but then you're adding it maybe in the front park where that other tree was.
So, let me show you the two plans. This is Brian's, Brian Stowall. His idea was just to cut a straight shot where the tree is now, which is approximately where that, where benches is, and put long benches on either side. So, that's one idea. And the benches are ADA compliant, bill's still back there, so we won't have any issues with that. And this is one idea that maximizes, if you will, the amount of plant growth space still, and minimizes, if you will, the stuff in the center. The other one that Lori came up with is to more arc it. And right now, there are existing benches, for instance, right here, and there's concrete around the side. So, we can reuse a lot of the concrete that would be moved at each end and have insets on each side. So, that, it'd be very similar to the other idea, but it actually gets you a lot more seating. And the key, which is yet to be determined, and Bob will be a key person in this, is how much distance should we stay away from each end tree in order to give it the best chance for survival? We don't want to mess with those trees. It's nice to have seeds here, but the main thing is keep those two trees doing their job, which is blocking part of Peter's store. Wouldn't want to lose that entirely.
We can install a window, Peter.
So, those are the two roughly framed drawings, if you will. And first, I really appreciate the fact that, you know, two volunteers spent a good amount of time walking around with us and doing this all on their own. It was really terrific. They had some good ideas. You know, where we go from here, we have seventy-eight hundred dollars left over from the downtown project. We'll need to spend it within a reasonable amount of time or just give it back. And when I say give it back, put it to another debt issue because it was our money. So, to me, this, again, seemed like a pretty good use of that money. It's related to downtown. And I don't know, I don't have the background Peter does, or maybe Bob does, in terms of how we designed it and how the state built it, but you know, not everything the way we designed it was built, and just look at the pilots. So, what I'm not sure is that we would have built it with three trees exactly at sign height as being the ideal place. How many more years is it going to be before you can see a signs?
Another twenty years?
Well, that's a fast, those creatures have doubled in size in six years. So, you know, you've got that time anyway. They weren't, as I said, the tree that I would pick for that location, but we had no say in the matter. And most of the rest of the trees came out fine. So, it's going to take a little time. If you look at them, they've been pruned up and up and up, and every year, they get pruned up a little more. We do our best to work with the businesses, especially with these older trees that have gotten to that height. We did some trimming down by the hitching post there in that area, and also in front of some of the trees that were large right up against the buildings there where D'Amici's just opened. To open it up to a point when these trees were high enough to be able to do that without hurting them aesthetically. So, the trouble with new trees is they're new trees, and they're, they need to grow. The advantage in that location is that they have a lot of soil, and they're a bit pampered compared to the other street trees, and will grow faster.
As you drive around, it's interesting that in Redding, for some reason, on Main and Haven, we plant trees right in front of store, front store doors. If you drive on other downtowns, it's always between the two stores where they join. It's kind of an interesting philosophy, it's like, oh.
I have a question for you. My own personal experience, having owned homes and many trees through the course of a long time, I'm wondering if, you know, it sounds like you wouldn't have put three here to begin with.
Not that variety.
Particularly this variety. I know in the case of my own situation, I've had, once some thinning went on, that trees thrived as compared with, you know, when they weren't being thin, they all seemed to be, you know, struggling. I mean, is that potentially something that could happen here anyway?
Well, once they, the third tree is intertwining now, so unless you try to make shrubs out of them, or topiary, you're going to run into this problem of them being planted too close together. These are not trees that are meant to be in this type of planting. Really want a, what they call a columnar or an upright variety that stay within themselves and grow tall and grow tall quickly. The locust tree is not the most attractive, but it's thin, it grows tall. You see them in many of these downtown plantings where, within a few years, you can trim them up to the roofs of buildings. This is a thick, aggressive tree that, as far as a street tree, makes a great tree because of that survivability. But in a downtown confined space, it has its limitations. For instance, on both corners of Woburn Street, there's zelcova on both corners. Okay, they've got a big bump out. They can grow, they can do very well as specimen trees. But in a cluster planting, you'd really want, if you look at some of the other trees along the front of CBS, you have pear trees, not the old Bradford that go this way, but the Chantilly Claws that go up. And it gives you a nice shape, it gives you color, and they stay, you know, tight. You could have done three trees that way. But these are as close as you'd ever want to see them planted. And they're manageable, but they'll need to be pruned and pruned and pruned. I mean, the nice thing is, you look at the size of the trees now and compare to, we have elm trees doing downtown that are doing very well. It's nice to see them come back. But these are just a big, aggressive tree. A lot of times in the downtown, for instance, the corner where the Atlantic is, those, the maple trees there that are in granite raised planters, nice way to go that way because they're very protected. The original specification called for a variety that spread out fifty feet, and they were ten feet away from the building. So, we changed, we were able, because it was a town project, to change the tree to a variety that grows upright. And if you look at those trees in the corner, they're attractive trees, they'll have nice fall color, but they're not going to interfere with anyone. So, it's the right tree in the right place.
And, you know, as you'd say to a homeowner, if we're going to take a tree down, we'll put up two or three. And the discretion is really up to Bob with some of that money in the downtown area, hopefully. Is there a hand in the public comment?
Yes, Mary Ellen of Sims, Pyrmont Road. As a member of the Aberdeen Foundation, I keep staring at this sign, twenty-five years, Tree City, U.S., USA. I came here not really knowing too much about this, I just heard about it today. And I know underneath there is one of the Adoptin' Island volunteers, and I know how much goes into your own money and time and water. And I didn't know he's part of your design team, and I was kind of going to defend, are you going to go in there and destroy what he's made just for? But he's part of the design team, so I guess I can't go that route. But I do think, it took how many years for that tree to get to that size, and we're just going to go chop it down for a few benches? That's how I'm seeing that. And I can be wholly, totally wrong, and I will, I have to leave because I'm supposed to be someplace else. I will listen to see, on television, I don't know if it's being broadcast or not, to see what you all decide. But as a member of Aberdeen Foundation, I plant little sticks. I remember my, I'm digressing, my kids were given in the fifth grade, trees. And because of the nature of the trees on my street, they're all very old, and we're all losing them. The only tree I have in my yard now is the tree my daughter planted from the Aberdeen Foundation, fifth grade, a spruce, blue spruce. The rest all had to be cut, not because I wanted to, they were dead, dying. So, I guess I'm plugging for the tree. You find a bench someplace else, that's fine.
Thank you for your comments.
Good luck. Thanks for listening.
Ms. Chair, I just want to get a sense of all the businesses that have weighed in here with her from Sims Jewelers are in favor of the project. We have a letter from Goodheart Children's Shop advocating for the project. From Jeff Struville of Struville Engineering at 603 Main, giving some very eloquent arguments against it. And, let's see, the, I don't know if the Donnelly Moran family represents any businesses there, or just residents, but they weighed in, I think, against it. So, do we have any other responses for any of the other?
The four businesses in the immediate area, Peter being one of them, were in favor. Not all could be here, not all of them others.
Should I contact you and express that?
I walked down there and asked them. I saw one more hand up. Gina?
Yeah, Gina Snyder, being here. I'm here to advocate for the tree. However, I can, I think I can see how this is going. I will say that Jeff Struville was extremely articulate in the letter to the editor that he wrote, can say it far better than I could. However, if you are going to go ahead and do something like this, number one, I would like to see the mitigation that Bob mentioned. Sometimes when people ask for this, they volunteer to replace three for one. So, it would be nice if the people who asked for this to be done would do that. And also, considering what Bob has said about the drip line and the need for water, and that these trees are doing so well because they can access water, I would really like to see porous pavers well installed and properly maintained so that while you may have pavement in that area, it's porous and those roots will be able to get the moisture. Plus, it's a great example of green infrastructure and the way things are going for stormwater mitigation, if you were to put that in.
Thank you, Gina. Any other comments from the folks here tonight, or from the board?
Would the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on removal of a tree at 640-660 Main Street?
Do I have a second? Markie Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
We'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the removal of one six-inch diameter zelcova tree located in front of 640-660 Main Street.
Do I have a second? Kevin Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hey, I came in here thinking I was opposed to this, but having listened to the tree warden, I know firsthand the tree warden is the biggest champion of trees in this town and will oppose the, any plan to remove a tree that's not well thought out. I think he made some good points about the health of the other two trees, the coverage and the long-term situation, and that sort of swayed my vote to support this. Notwithstanding the great arguments the other folks have made tonight.
I agree. I mean, I think it's a tough decision to cut down a tree that's perfectly, it really is. Now, if we've got three healthy trees that are in a very small space, and they're blocking all of the businesses in our primary business district, and we have an opportunity to plant some trees elsewhere to mitigate that, that, you know, I think it's a hard decision, but...
And I hope Gina's comment, some porous pavers and the other points she made were taken into account when we go forward here.
I actually, I wasn't, I kind of didn't make a conclusion before I came in. You know, sometimes there's overwhelming information on a topic, and you feel like you know what you want to do. But I kind of came here wanting to hear what everybody had to say. It strikes me that a couple of things are true. The renovation of the downtown business district was designed for beauty, usability, and the attraction and sustenance of business. It seems like we might have got a little overzealous, not through any fault of our own, with this third tree. And the idea that we can mitigate the loss of this tree with several others. We've apparently got some funding that we should, you know, prudently spend to finish the project and then, you know, replace, if we can replace three to one and do it in the downtown area. Based on the direction, you know, of Bob Keating, we start to put the right thing in the right place. You know, to me, that really matters. I do think that, you know, negatively impacting businesses, whether they're new or whether they've been here a long time, is not a good thing for us to do. I mean, we need to encourage and support all of our small businesses, and part of the way that I think we do that is by having, I mean, I personally like to wander around down there. The idea of being able to sit down and talk to somebody, you run into somebody, and I think it creates commerce. And so, it's not about picking a tree over people, it's about, you know, the natural coexistence in a business area of all of those, you know, component parts. I do think that the idea about the porous pavers is a really good one. And I think the idea of a three for one is also an extremely good one. And I like that we would have Bob at the switch of that instead of a state authority that was telling us how to do our own business here. I always kind of bristle when that happens, but I guess if you're spending somebody else's money, you've got to tolerate what they do. But at the end of the day, it doesn't mean you can't make it right. So, I'm kind of coming down on that spot. It's not, it isn't an easy decision, but I think I am coming down in that direction.
Yeah, just speaking for myself, just echo, I think, John's point. I think the best of intentions sometimes turn out differently than we expect. And I'm by no stretch an expert on trees. But to the extent that the three represents too much greenery for that space and impairs the overall health of that island, we do need to give ourselves the latitude of occasionally sitting back and saying, "The intention of this wasn't met, we have a chance to make good on it." And occasionally, that'll mean that some of the plans that we undertook at first need to be undone. And in this case, we have a means to, I guess, make lemonade out of the lemons. We'll end up with more seating, we'll end up with pervious pavers, and hopefully, better use overall.
Kevin, any closing comments?
Yeah, you know, I'd probably echo what John, obviously, had said as well. I just have one real quick question in reference to that three to one, Bob. This would be something that you can go out and you can specify the tree, right tree for the right area. So, it's not like we're putting something in like we've done here, and we're going to have to take it out up here in time later.
We plant square trees in the downtown areas, replacements, we plant them in parks, schools, all the, you know, streets in town. So, we try and pick, well, we do, we pick the right tree for the right area based on, in the downtown project, one of the things you get with landscape architects, and I review all the plans under the DRT for landscaping, is they tend to build out a project from beginning, so they stuff it with plant material. It's meant to look good on opening day, but they don't plan... It's meant to look good on opening day, but they don't plan for the future. And we could run into this in school projects and whatever, and we've taken a lot of material out that is not for future. In the state, in the state plan, we had no input there, so when that island was done, you had three trees, it looked finished. You know, six, seven years later, now you're, you know, you're dealing with plant material that's too large for a space, or could be considered too large. So, I mean, this is just what John said, you're writing something that was overbuilt at the time. People have added material and done a great job, these islands are beautiful in town, but sometimes you have to step back and say, you can only prune so much, and you take a little out for the future.
And would we have area if we still wanted to have them all in the downtown area? Because I definitely agree, we don't have enough trees in downtown. I know it's also tough because of the nature of it.
Well, then you take out concrete somewhere, so that's another issue. It depends, we, under the renovation of the downtown, they made very, as you know, very narrow sidewalks, and when many of the trees were planted, they were literally up against canopies coming out from the buildings. So instead of, you know, it was the decision not to go out more, which would have been healthier for the trees, but to come in more, so we have, we have very small tree wells. And the average health span, if you, the National Forest Service will tell you in their literature, a street tree may last anywhere from five to seven years, because they just don't have room to grow. Ours are past that and are doing well, but we keep them watered, and we do some fertilizing, and occasionally we lose one, but for the most part, they're all doing pretty well. Our tree wells along in the front of CVS and the businesses are two by four feet wide. That's really, really small. If you're in downtown Boston, and they're wide sidewalks, they can be ten by tens. And I live in the town of Canton, which did their downtown, they went over, the state did it, they went to a wider sidewalk, and most of their tree wells are six by eight. So it just depends on which design, which way you want to go. So we have filled all the wells in the past that were, trees were removed, and there was no money in the budgets at the time to replace them. They all have tree wells, trees in them now, but it's a challenge to keep them alive.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Let's see, that was discussion. All those in favor of the motion to remove the six-inch tree? Raise your hand. Five zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Next on our agenda is a discussion regards, the Human Relations Advisory Committee regards some graffiti that was noted in the town. Please. Hi, Camille, good evening.
Hello.
You think you work here?
We've seen you in action before.
You're just a little too comfortable in the room, right?
Well, thank you for having us here. I know that I've read in the Chronicle you have a very busy meeting, so we will be really to the point, and this is your Human Relations Advisory Committee, and I think we should start here and everybody introduce themselves.
Jacqueline Shelton Wallace.
Linda Snow Doctor, I'm liaison to the school committee and...
Camille Anthony.
Christine Hansen.
One of the newest members, Max Agala.
And Lori Hoden. And I'm going to tell you about two people who cannot be here tonight. So Kyung Lee Woo, he cannot be here tonight, and also Monique Ganarana, mom, cannot be here tonight.
And...
I can't say his name.
Okay. He's the pastor of the...
Oh, Kyung, yeah.
There you go, I'm going to get into it. Okay, thanks. And the reason we're in here is because we're in a quandary. We had an incident which Christine is going to describe, and we became aware of, and held a meeting in June to talk about it, and as we delved into this whole issue, we became very confused as to what our role as the HRAC really is, and especially in incidences like this. So first, we should start with Christine.
Over the last several months, starting in the winter, there were a series of incidents within our community. Best terminology is offensive graffiti, symbols of hatred, et cetera, were scrawled or written in public places within our community. Some of these incidents were reported to the police department, some were not, some were reported in that area, et cetera. What then transpired was there was an effort to remove those symbols and graffiti that was somewhat successful, but not entirely successful, and then becoming aware of that, bringing it to the attention of the HRAC and to the Board of Selectmen as well.
And it was interesting how we heard about it, is that Christine, you first, you didn't, there was an incident in a public bathroom with the swastika, and you then, as a resident of Rennie, didn't know where to go.
No, I did not, and actually took some direction from Arkassa, who then put me in touch with now Deputy Chief Sagala, and with Chief Cormier, and then on to the Human Relations Advisory Commission.
And just to clarify, when the incident took place, it was now a direct report to the police department. It happened after we heard about it from Christine, and by the time we heard about it, it had been erased in the bathroom at 3:00.
Linda, you wish to say anything? She's speechless, I can't believe it.
Well, just that I think it's important that we clarify when something happens, how we can move in a timely way to respond, both in proactive ways and in reactive ways. Part of what we've discussed is educating the public about what happens if you do see something, what should you do first, and I think you have a copy of a draft, a press release that we'd like to publish in the newspapers that talks about this incident, but more so directs people to go to the police first, what they should do. So Christine didn't know what she should do, and we'd like people to know that if they see something, this is what they should do, this is who they should go to, they are absolutely not alone, this is all of our homes, and none of us will stand for hate being a part of our home. So it would be great to clarify for our community what they should do when they see something like this. Did you want, should I say one?
Well, if you want to, sure, you're on the ball.
And so part of the question that we're asking you is, we're an advisory committee for you, so where does our initiative start and stop, and where does, what responsibility and what liberties can we take when something is reported like this? Do we bring the press release to you first and wait for another meeting? There's time involved in that? Or do we have your blessing, I don't know if I'm saying this right, to move ahead and respond to an event like this in both reactive and proactive ways?
Can I ask you a couple of, back up, just to rewind a little bit? I thought I heard moments ago, this was, there were more than one instance of this. Is that accurate?
Some of them.
The one particular incident was the swastika, as Linda referred to it, a symbol of hatred and that, and there have been other incidents following that.
Were there repetitions of that, or some other?
No, not particularly repetitions of that symbol, but other things.
And the facility in question, the facilities, where were these sorts of things scrawled?
Just generally in the downtown business area.
I see. Thank you.
So that was a public bathroom?
Yes.
And one of, and you can speak to this, Mark, one of the problems is security cameras.
Oh, right, 30 Haven Street does not have in the, in the area where the bathrooms are any type of security cameras, they wouldn't be in the bathroom, but outside the area at all, in that hallway at all, definitely not, so there's no really way for us to tell. There was no investigation to be able to be conducted once, once the thing was cleaned up. And again, to clarify, none of these were reported, just from Christine, is all we're hearing about any type of incidents down at 30 Haven Street.
We have a generalized graffiti problem. You described this as being part of, or is this...
I don't think so, I think this is more directed at, what she's talking about, one other incident, would have been one specific person down there who's since moved.
Yes.
So I don't think there's anything else going on that we can see, this was happened, the incident with the swastika was back several months ago at this point, and we've had nothing else come up at all that we're aware of.
So if I summarize, at least what I'm hearing, is the Human Relations Committee would like to know what they should do and how they should do it.
Good.
And if I just might point out on 5C1, 2, and 3, tonight's packet, or your weekend packet release, has the draft press release of 5C2 and 5C3 especially.
Any comments from, I'm sorry, any comments from the Human Relations Committee?
No, I think you said it correctly, safely. I'd actually add a caveat that it's, we do have ideas of what we'd like to do, we'd sort of like permission to do them. Right?
Any other comments?
Are you talking about the press release?
I mean, we have ideas that have a response, but we don't want to go beyond our purview when we report to you, we want to make sure that that's your vision of what we do as well.
Any other questions from the board? Comments?
I'd also just want to, sorry, John, remind the board that there's an important line here, if it's a hate crime, that's a legal issue. This group may have its own feelings and views, but that aside, that's a legal issue that police should be involved with, and would have been right away if it had been reported as such.
Would this have met the, risen to the level of a hate crime if the material were preserved in its intact form, in and of itself?
It would have to be directed towards someone. Absolutely, at that point, no, it would have been a vandalism, but that would have been, it must have been directed towards someone, no.
Would the determination of a hate crime also depend on what was in the head of the person that did this, in other words, if this were just some high school kid doing a pranky thing because it's cool to write swastika, they have no idea of the history? Do you, that's why I think it's important to involve the police.
Again, if it had to be directed towards a certain individual or a, or a, a monument, a, a group of individuals, you know, if it wasn't directed towards anyone, a high school kid, would you go to bed? No, it would not be a hate crime, it would be vandalism.
That's why I think it's very important, to make the point you did in your release here, call the police, get them in as the first step, so they can then figure out.
Yeah, I kind of think that's the overriding thing that is really important, the fact that the Human Relations Committee just kind of lends itself to that, and the only thing that concerns me, you know, in reading the press releases, when you give symbols of hate airtime, then you've given them airtime, you know, and, you know, in a press release that actually mentions what happened exactly, it's kind of, the thing that bothers me about that is, it doesn't bother me, I mean, I'm thrilled that you, that you folks are, you know, taking such a serious interest in trying to deal with this. I don't want to create fodder for, you know, for people to go, oh, that bothers them? Well, let me go, let me go do that, you know, because there are people in this world that if they feel like they have a good way to get your goat, they're going to get your goat, because that's what they do. The idea of, you know, almost everything else except identifying, you know, you know, I think, identifying the exact situation, when you do that, I think you're, I just think you're opening the door, you know, it's kind of like some of these terrorists that we see on television, there's only so much airtime they're going to get on what they're doing, you know, because otherwise it gets, it's like fuel for the fire. The idea of talking about conceptually what you guys talked about in that press release is excellent. The idea of directing them to the police, I think, is really important. The idea that now suddenly being public with the fact in a more clear way, that there's a committee that's glad to hear from you, is also really good. So I think all of that's good, the only thing that I'm suggesting about the press release is I'd just be a little careful about, you know, how much specific...
Specific.
Yeah, okay, yeah, like that. I usually could say that for some reason, tonight I can't, but that's, you know, that's my only comment.
John, are you suggesting that we take out what the incident was and just talk about...
Yeah, that there have been incidents, and they...
Or describe it generically.
Yeah, I think just to, just to not give some, this was a, this was an ignorant person that committed this act. There are other ignorant people around, and, you know, sometimes if you give them a little, a little nudge, you know, in the press, it's going, oh, yeah, well, if that bothers them, fine.
Fifteen minutes of fame.
So one other thing I'm noticing here, you had mentioned that when, that it has to be directed at a person to be a hate crime, and that doesn't seem to be what it says in this press release. So I don't think we want to have a press release that doesn't, that says something different than what the law really intends. I do think it's a really good idea to have.
Conceptually, I...
I love the idea of saying, you know, as a community, we're strongly opposed to, you know, anything that's prejudicial, and, you know, we take a strong stand, we want to make sure everyone knows what we should do, you know, that kind of thing.
The fact that nobody knew, maybe nobody thought to call the police, but now you make it clear that that's a, that's, it rises to that, because it does. You know, I totally agree with you. I love the idea of making clear what your committee does, I think the idea that we have an intolerance to intolerance, you know, in this town is all really very important. I just kind of, I dress it down a little on the scale.
And having to know that they can come to you is a great thing, right?
History is full of offensive things been, being written in bathrooms from about the moment after bathrooms were invented. And I'm struggling with both the medium and the message. The, if this were ordinary graffiti, this would be a vandalism issue. This particular symbology, I get the, I get the hidden message. It sounds like it's a singular event, and what the group might focus on is evaluating whether this is systemic, is there, is there an individual, a group of individuals doing it, in which case, then you've got a fact pattern that you can act on. This seems like it's a singular event, maybe even a single individual. To John's point, you breathe oxygen into the argument, and all you're doing is letting the next crank out there, maybe I'll get my fifteen minutes of fame, and irritate one member of the Human Relations Committee. I think it's fine to speak about tolerance issues in general. This sounds like it's a one of a kind, and not to dismiss it, I might just say, I'll, you know, keep my powder dry for the next one, naturally turn it over to the police to the extent that this is part of a fact that fits into a larger mosaic, but it doesn't appear to have much been described here tonight. In terms of how you do it, we've talked about what to do, the how you do it, I think it's fine to have a press release and speak to the bigger issues about neighborliness and tolerance, and what it means to be a renting citizen.
I actually need to play devil's advocate a little bit, because around the same time, there were incidents in Bedford and Belmont that antisemitism is not something that is quiet, there's intolerance, that's general, but there can also be a denial that it happens in my backyard, and that's not healthy for a community. And so if we do not give, if we just talk generically every time there's an incident, or an incident that doesn't get reported to the police, then there's another message that we're giving to the people that saw that message. There are people that went to those establishments that live in that area who don't feel safe anymore, because there was hate in their backyard, and whether or not it's deemed, because it didn't go to the police, we can't decide whether it was aimed at specific people or not, but that doesn't change the fact that it did impact specific people, and it impacts the whole community.
You know, Linda, I think that there's not a thing in the world wrong with being very specific about, you know, there having been anti-Semitic behavior, thoughts, I don't, all I'm, my only suggestion to you was not, to not be specific about the problem. I don't want to give them an easel, you know, that's the, I mean, that's my only thought, and I don't claim to be right about that. I'm just... Um, I'm just putting it out there, because there are a lot of cranks, and, you know, um, sometimes, I mean, I know that, um, there's a lot of, you know, I'm, as you all know, I'm down at a baseball field, you know, half my life. And, you know, the one here in town, um, you know, there's a lot of equipment down there, storage equipment down there that gets tagged all the time, you know? And it has never been tagged in the way that you're talking about. It's been more of a vandalism type of tag. And, um, we have, we have been diligent in, you know, in, in repainting. And so after a while, you wear them down. Um, and it's like, it's more trouble than it's worth for them. We don't give them, you know, we, the, the, kind of the messages they're giving are more kid messages, I'm in charge, kind of thing. They aren't the kind of thing you're talking about. Uh, and I'm not suggesting that I know the right answer to this. I'm just saying, I think it's highly appropriate to be specific, give some thought to, you know, how much, you know, how much of an easel you want to create for the next crank, that's all.
And if this, you'd be surprised at the reaction, I think, of this board if you did have an event of the sort you're describing, Linda. If it was a systemic act that was in public on buildings like the sort in Belmont, I think you'd get, you'd be very, um, you'd have a predictable response out of this board.
The, I, I, I can only speak for myself, but I would be out of my chair around that if that was, you know, something that was going on in a systemic way. I mean, I know in Bedford, they did have some, it was like everywhere. It was a real problem. And I don't know exactly how they solved it, and I don't know if you guys have done any research with how that little community has, you know, because I haven't heard it again, but there was something, there was stuff going on there that was, you know, that was inappropriate and hateful and all of those kind of things. I, I love the fact that you were here having a discussion about it, that this committee, you know, thought enough of, you know, the, the board that kind of empowers them to do their job to come back and have a visit and see what goes on. So I, I'm not trying to suggest I have absolutely the right answer. I'm just offering a little, a little feedback. I, you know, and I don't know, do I mean, do we need to create a policy of some kind?
You think the group's only looking for approval of the press releases written or suggested amendments? Yeah?
Yes. Actually, I would go, we're asking actually for, um, this is one incident, there might be others. This incident has taken a very long time to respond to, which is not the best, I'll speak for myself. I think it's way too long that this has taken to respond to this incident and to get proactive information out there, reactive information out there. And so part of what I'm wondering, and I thought the committee's question was, is that if something like this happens, do we need to go through a process, what is the process we need to go through to, to respond to it publicly? Is it just through our officer, or do we need, because we're your advisory board, do we need to come to you for you to vote on our response?
No, I, I think job one is get the data, get the facts, you know, get the, preserve the environment so that you've got, uh, you can draw as much data out, evidence out of the circumstance as you can. Your right time is not your friend, but I assume an investigation of this sort doesn't necessarily take a long time. Maybe it's part of a larger, larger mosaic.
Why did it take so long? This happened months ago, right?
Over the building blocks of the delay. Is that the first time I heard about this?
Can we make those, get those out of the way?
When I interviewed you.
Part of the impediment. I can't remember exactly when I learned about this, but I'll say it was early July. And you met in June, so it was after your June meeting. And what I asked for, the H-RAC to do was to come in and see the selectmen, but to invite me to their next meeting, which just so happened to be August. And then this is your next meeting. So in terms of their next meeting and your next meeting, this is the fastest it could happen.
And he had, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
He had a delay in, in, uh, May. I think I, I talked to him. It was around town, April, and there just wasn't a forum. We tried to meet, I, two or three times, and it didn't have a forum. So we kept pushing Christine off before she could get in. It was June before she got in, so that, that's what it is. Well, I think, I think what, what the board, what our committee needs, you know, is that the process will be that we run it through, uh, through the police department and work with the police department. And, um, see if there's outreach that needs to be done, et cetera. And I assume that's what you're thinking.
Bob?
Yeah, my suggestion would be along Camille's lines is that, you know, the police are the liaison for this group. Um, I fully trust whatever judgment they make, and I certainly don't think we need to have them in here to see you at any other instance. But where this was the first one, it seemed like a reasonable discussion.
Time is of the essence.
And, and just to make another comment on the press release, I, I'd really emphasize the text-to-tip part. Because I think, you know, that, that really is, should be the tip of your sword, kind of thing, for getting the information to the police in a really timely manner. They can come out and do an investigation on it. Um, I know that they, they kind of had a huge success with that.
Absolutely.
With the text-to-tip program. Um, I'm pretty sure it's anonymous as well, too, correct?
It is, yep.
So, you know, people don't have to feel like they're putting their name in the middle of it, but they can get it right out there right away. So I, I'd almost really highlight that little section when you do put out the release.
One other thing, the mission for this committee, which was written years ago, is not the mission we, um, use anymore. So I don't know if you'd like to know what, what our mission is. Uh, did they get a copy of the mission?
I had this brochure, but you were gonna send me a completed one.
And we forgot.
If you haven't yet, I'm not sure what it is.
We had trouble, our, we lost a member because she had plans, and she had, her work, she had the template. And we're having a difficult time.
You're gonna have Dropbox now, thanks.
So we'll get you a copy of our new mission. I, I don't think you're gonna have any trouble with it, but just so that you know.
Memorialize it in your mission.
Yeah, it would be good.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Oh, just one other thing. Jackie, did you want to say?
No, wasn't the mission included in our press release?
It gets in the press release.
Okay, so then we should have.
So we've got it.
So the last, sorry.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, first paragraph, the first paragraph under the label, Human Relations Advisory, ooh, there's a typo, Advisory Committee. Which promote, do you, would you like? Sure. Um, the Human Relations Advisory Council is an advisory group for the Redding Board of Selectmen, which promotes and encourages respect for the human and civil rights of the entire Redding community. HRAC sponsors outreach efforts and educational programs to foster a greater understanding and appreciation for diversity. The committee works to prevent prejudice and discrimination on the basis of color, age, gender, religion, disability, culture, natural origin, ancestry, or sexual orientation. HRAC is a safe place where individuals or groups may plan opportunities for intercultural interactions or share concerns. To ensure that Redding is a welcoming and vibrant community, the HRAC celebrates each individual's unique qualities. That's the newest version of the mission.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Thank you all.
Okay, we just have one announcement that is for Town Day. This is Reverend Janet Smith-Freshton.
Hi, everybody. I'm the pastor at Old South United Methodist Church, your closest neighbor, and wanting to know that on Sunday, while Town, the Redding Town, their day is going on, um, we would like to invite concerned citizens to join us in standing for peace. Justice for our neighbors near and far. We're doing a shoe collection, so people can stand with us for peace, and other different kinds of actions. But much has been happening here, there, and everywhere, and so it's an attempt to invite people into, um, something we can all stand united for. So noon to four.
Noon to four.
A shoe collection? A shoe collection.
A shoe collection.
Yes, a collection of shoes. I suggest old ones you don't need. People are bringing them from noon to four on our front lawn as a way of standing in solidarity with people here, near, and everywhere, working for peace and justice and tolerance for all people.
So as a representation of the solidarity?
Yes, so we stand together for peace, yes. We'll have things for children. They can trace their footprints and do chalk or any good things like that, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone who'd like to join us, standing for peace, devil's.
Thank you.
Excellent. Sure thing.
Okay. Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen is the licensing authority for the Town of Redding. Will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September second, at eight thirty P M. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts. Show cause why Jay and Ricky Incorporated doing business as Ricky's Liquor Retail Package Store license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages should not be modified, suspended, or revoked for violating G L Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four on August third, two thousand fourteen, to wit, the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under twenty-one years of age. All interested parties may appear in person, may submit their comments in writing, or may email comments to town-manager@ci.redding MA.us.
Thank you, Dan. Chief?
Chair, um, no, okay. We've asked for the board to conduct a, a hearing on another situation that occurred with these liquors shortly after our last, uh, the last hearing that involved the sale of alcohol to under age, uh, person. Um, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Christina Adola and Officer Laura Bullis. These are the officers that were involved in the situation that occurred, um, a few weeks ago. So Officer Bullis can relay you the facts of how she initiated, uh, the incident that occurred, and then Sergeant Adola can tell you about the follow-up that occurred. So just a basic story.
Good evening, everyone. Good morning, Sam. Um, okay, so on, on August third, I was working the sea shift, so the Florida midnight shift, and I was in the area specifically of Ricky's Liquor due to the, uh, the recent events of the taking place there earlier, um, followed up, I believe, by Detective McHugh over here with you guys. I was in the area, I was actually in the parking lot, and I saw, um, a youth come out of, come out of Ricky's Liquor holding just a bottle of Jäger in his hand. Um, and I said, oh, what are you drinking tonight? I had the, I had my windows down in the, in the patrol car, and he said, Jäger, and he was getting into the, the passenger seat of the vehicle. And I said, okay, I said, how old are you? And he said, twenty-one. And I said, oh, do you have any ID on you? And he said, no, I don't. So immediately I was like, well, that's not good. Um, so I said to him, when's your birthday? And he said, July twentieth. And I said, oh, of what year? And he said, uh, ninety-two? And I, so, so I pulled up my car right next to, um, the vehicle. There was, the individual that I was speaking with was the passenger in the front seat. It was a driver, and then there was three passengers in the backseat. None of them, to me, looked anywhere near twenty-one. Um, so I, I pulled up next to him, and I said, I said, what's your name? And I started to type in his name into the computer system in our cars. And I said, what's your birthday? And then he said, okay, I just turned seventeen. So he had just turned seventeen, um, approximately a little over two weeks prior to that. So at that time, um, you know, I, I started talking to everybody in the vehicle. I informed dispatch, specifically Sergeant Adola, you know, this is the situation that's going on down here. She said she was gonna come down. I, you know, like I said, I started talking to the other, uh, gentleman in the car. They all said that they were seventeen and eighteen, um, so none of them of legal age. And at that time, um, the store clerk had come out to the vehicle, and he said, what's going on? And I said, please go back inside. I'm gonna speak with them, and I'll, I'll come and speak with you when I'm done. He said, okay, so we went back inside. Sergeant Adola and Officer Hurley arrived there, and we started to get everyone out of the vehicle. We asked them all their names. We got all their information. We called in to dispatch, like we usually do. We offered, since there was alcohol involved, we offered everyone the portable breath vest, as we usually do. They all accepted. As I was giving them all the P B T, Sergeant Adola was searching the vehicle. All of the results of the P B T yielded a zero, so none of them were drinking. We didn't think that they were, but due to alcohol being involved, like I said, we're still gonna offer that. So they all, all yielded a zero. We had them all contacted the legal guardians to come pick them up. Like I said, Sergeant Adola was searching the vehicle. She asked the driver if he would open the trunk. He said it was broken. She said, please open your trunk. He opened the trunk. The rest of all this was in here. Um, I think it, it totals about sixty-two beers, Bud Lights, Bud Weisers of various, you know, some of it's sixteen food ounces, some of it's twelve bottles and cans. Um, there was also a bottle of vodka, Syrah Peach that was in there, and as well as the, the Jäger that the gentleman I had seen originally had in the, the front seat there. So at that time, the individuals admitted that they had all put in money. They put in approximately ninety dollars each, or ninety dollars collectively to buy the alcohol. They said their plan was to go to the Wakefield Woods and consume it. Um, I will mention that four of these individuals were from Wakefield, and so they were coming from out of town. Um, they had said that, you know, this was, this was a known place to go to get, to get alcohol in the area. They come to Wakefield to, um, to get it there. They said they weren't I D'd, they weren't asked for their I D. They've been there, they said they had been there other additional times and got alcohol there. And they said also, this was kind of on the Facebook page, you know, kids knew to go to Ricky's Liquor, because they knew that they could get alcohol there. So that being said, at that time, you know, the guardians came to pick up the kids. We let them know, based on whatever your child's age is, they're gonna be summoned to Hoover District Court or Lowell Juvenile Court. All five were charged with minor possession. In addition, the two that, um, purchased the alcohol were charged with, um, procuring alcohol by false pretenses. So the youth stated that the driver and the passenger originally went in, they got all the stuff in the trunk, and then they decided that they just, for whatever reason, they needed the Jägermeister. So the passenger went in, got that, and he came out, and that's when I saw them. So all of the, all the youths were collected by their guardians. Sergeant Adola, myself, and Officer Hurley went inside to speak with the store clerk. At that time, um, the store manager also showed up and, uh, kind of stood by for a minute while we were speaking with the clerk. I asked the clerk, I said, why do you think we're here tonight? He said, there was kids in a car with beer. And I said, okay, but why would, why would we be here for that? And he said, I don't know. And I said, okay, um, how old were they? And he said, they were twenty-one. And I said, well, how do you know that? He said, I looked at their I D's. And I said, okay, can you remember anything specific about the I D's? Can you tell me anything about the I D's? And he said, they were Massachusetts I D's. And I said, okay. And I looked up, and there was one video camera to the right and one kind of bird's eye view right over the counter. And I said, okay, so when I look at the system here, it's gonna show me that you looked at their I D's? And he said, yeah, I didn't look at their I D's this time. And I said, okay. And then I asked him what happened, and, and he said that the, the kids had only come in the one time and gotten all this stuff and then had left. And he said he had I D'd them sometime in the past, so he didn't feel that he needed to do it again. Then we spoke with the store manager, who was very cooperative. He let us go back. Officer, Sergeant Adola and myself went and looked at the video surveillance footage, showing exactly pretty much what the kids had said. The driver and the passenger went in originally, got all this stuff, stacked it down next to the coolers, brought it, uh, up to the counter. Since there were so much, then they went back and grabbed this yellow box here, placed it on there, brought it out to the vehicle. Then a little while later, you see the, um, the car moves, it goes into a different spot. They must have said, you know, kind of bell went off, oh, we forgot the Jäger. So then the other one comes in. The passenger comes in and purchases that and then goes back out. So it was just something as the kids had said had happened. At that time, um, the, uh, the manager stated that his clerk was no longer employed there. I can't confirm or deny that. I haven't been, you know, I haven't been in the store since, so I don't know. But he, he stated that he was let go, was no longer welcome to work there, based on, um, you know, what's happening. The, the clerk was being, uh, was notified that he was also gonna be charged for selling minors and minors to Hoover District Court. We got, we got the video footage. We got it on a, um, flash drive. However, it didn't work in our computer system down at the station. But like I said, Sergeant Adola and myself did see that. I think, I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Officer Bullis, the fifth, the fifth, uh, uh, minor was from what town?
This town.
The P V D name referenced in the narrative is not the youth, not one of the guardians.
Sorry, can you say it again?
There's a P V D town reference. Maybe I misread this. Could you recall, you have one Redding and four Wakefield youths?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the board? Any other questions from members of the board?
I have one question. Have you, so how long ago did this happen?
It was August 3rd.
August 3rd, and so now it's September 2nd?
So.
And so have you been provided with that footage from the liquor store yet?
Yes, we have.
You've got it, then it works.
Yes. And it shows exactly what Officer Bullis described, purchasing alcohol, there's no exchange of any type of ID, just cash.
Got it.
Actually, it's not even an exchange of change.
Well, I'm asking because the theme of the last visit was that there was a flash drive, but it didn't work, and, you know, I was wondering, you know, if you were getting a little bit stronger cooperation this time around. Good.
And just for introductions, Lieutenant Detective Richard Abagni.
Just to pick up on what Mr. Halsey left out, I realize that you can't interrogate videotape, but to the extent you may have looked at other transactions on the videotape, did you see behavior that was consistent with ID checking irrespective of the participant's ages?
There was two more purchases that were involved in this case, and there was no exchange of ID either in purchase. However, the individuals purchasing alcohol, I'm looking question as far as their age is concerned, but still I think the policy would be to exchange ID no matter what.
Sure.
I mean, I think the tips training suggests strongly that the IDs happened for pretty much everybody.
In the last meeting of this store owner, there was the proposal to purchase some sort of device to validate the authenticity of licenses. Did you see that device?
I did not.
Well, it sounds like there was hardly a time.
I didn't see any of it, but...
You may not have been looking for it, I'm just curious if you might have caught your eye.
Which of our meetings was that hearing, Bob? Just to refresh my memory, what was the date of the hearing?
There's a five-day window, Dan.
It was a Tuesday night, and this was a Sunday night.
Yeah, it was Tuesday to Sunday, so...
Any other questions here in the board?
Yeah, did they, did the individuals in the car mention how many times they had been to that location before?
They said that they'd been there several times prior to that. They also said that it was kind of a word around town, and it was why they came from Wakefield over to Redding, is because they knew that they could get it there. They also mentioned that it was on Facebook and...
So social media had picked this up.
So other people had said, "Hey, go to..."
Yes, ma'am.
This is where you go.
Right.
Any other questions for the board?
We don't have anything that says that, though, right? We don't have any?
We do not have anything for Facebook.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions on the evidentiary front, but I do have a question of the town council once we close the hearing.
Thank you. There'll be some guidance, I think, that we want to take as well here. If there are other questions, Patel?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris Coleman, on behalf of Mr. Patel, Captain Patel, who's with me here this evening. You know, it's very difficult, especially as good circumstances like this, to go up there and explain why something happened or what we're going to do to make things better without sounding just like a big excuse or somebody trying to deflect blame. There's almost really no way you can do that, so whatever we say here this evening, I want to emphasize that that's not my intention, it's not Mr. Patel's intention to deflect blame or try to just excuse something away, because that's not gonna happen here. This is a situation of minors and alcohol. The seriousness of that situation becomes magnified, especially given those circumstances. So what we're here tonight to bring to you is, you know, what are we gonna do to try to fix this? You can consider that and make the decision that you feel appropriate. The clerk that was there is the same clerk that was there for the last incident that we were here for, he's been probably the only one who would be involved in an incident like that. When we were here last, I, it was, I kind of felt that this could be a situation where maybe it was just a bad day that this guy had. I didn't, I didn't know Mr. Patel for 20 years, I didn't think that the clerk that he would have there would do this, I mean, maybe that was a little naive, but it was the 3rd of July, it was a busy day, he was all by himself, I mean, he always said all these, what sounded like mitigating circumstances, but that wasn't the case. The case was that he didn't check the IDs. Mr. Patel never observed that, but here he is, and, you know, he's the captain of the ship, he's the buck stops with him, he's the guy, it's his store, so he's here to take responsibility for that, but he was fired on the spot. I mean, when they, the police report, they said he was, when he saw that video, he said, "You're fired," that was it. What they're going to do now, or what they would hopefully be able to do now, is that all the ships are gonna be taken by Mr. and Mrs. Patel, there's not gonna be another employee there, they can't even trust anybody else right now to do this. This is a pretty important part of their livelihood, and they feel very uneasy about that right now. You know, I know that the town has other concerns, and certainly the parents and the children that were involved, they're concerned about the safety of their children, and you're charged with that as well, so, I mean, I pick out overrides, I don't wanna make it look like he's like all worried about himself, he's obviously concerned about the other ramifications of the core efforts of his clerk, but certainly he has a lot of other concerns as well, and would love to be able to continue to operate there, it is their store. So he's been a longtime operator of the convenience store next door. I know they don't sell alcohol there, I know that, but they sell cigarettes there, and they sell lottery tickets, so they have not had an incident. It's very, very difficult to see them go down or see them really maybe take a real, real strong hit for a mistake that they made in a hire, but that's not, we can make that case, or we can try to persuade in that way, but ultimately it's your decision to decide on that. The Commonwealth and the Selectmen have provided guidelines on the offenses. The last time we were here, I agree, there was some aggravating circumstances, like the time that they were there, they've only been open for a little over a year, and this incident's happened, I'm not gonna try to sugarcoat this, this is the way it is. And another incident came right on its heels, I couldn't believe when I got the call, but I kind of knew in my heart of hearts what it was, how it happened, and it was that other clerk. The first offense, the Commonwealth usually recommends a warning to three days, he suspended it for four. I don't, we didn't really have any argument after that, it was what it was. The second offense, which we have here, is recommended three to six days of suspension. The third offense, six to 12 days. Fourth offense, is they recommend a show cause hearing for possible replication of the license unless there's other circumstances to indicate otherwise. They're guidelines, we talked about that last meeting, they were guidelines, they were, well, we went to four days because you felt that it was warranted. I only hope that when you're making a decision here tonight, and there's other people that have been speaking, parents whose children were affected probably by this, I hope you just consider that this is this act, more the act of an employee, I think, and if Patel's of a very serious interest in it, it's fixed, and hopefully come more in line with the guidelines that we have here, if you wanna go stronger, just put them in your purview. I probably left something out that Mr. Patel would like to say. Frankly, I think you probably should hear from him anyway regardless, because he's sick over this, and I think he needs to talk. So, Cal, do you have anything you want to add to what I've said here tonight?
That's the only thing, is a bad employee, I got, I'm doing a 20-years' business, this is the first employee I got a bad one. I got hired a lot of people, they leave, hired a lot of in 20 years, too many people. I didn't get anything bad yet, and I don't have, I never think about it, this is gonna be a life of bad employee, you know? This is the first one in my 20-years' thing, he came up with a really bad guy. I already got the machine, we already got the machine, but he don't ask for the ID, that's the most thing. I gave him the tip training too, he got the things too, tip ID things. I gave him, after that first meeting, I gave him like almost two hours later, you know, telling me everything, you know, he cannot do, and he got the two, almost two, three hours tip training too. I did everything what I can do, but only thing is bad, and I never got bad experience, I got the so many years. I got the employee, I got hiring, they leave, they come back, you know, other people, you know, I never problem, this is a, I have problem. Right now, after that, I fire him, I work, me and my wife all the time, I fix the problem right away, you know, and I think they did the straight operation after this happened, everybody checked the ID, you know? There was enough, I was passed too, did it after a couple days, they keep doing, I think, steam up, I'm sorry, I think chronically they are, they do it. And I can work all the time, that's the only thing I can do it, and I can stop this whole thing, you know? Okay, right now I cannot trust anybody, like when you do the accident, you so scared to, like saying thing, I'm scared right now, right now I cannot hire anybody either, I cannot trust, if the good guy still I cannot trust. That's right now, I'm in this situation right now, I am. Once I fire him, me and my wife work all the time.
Any questions from the board?
Does the board have any power to decide, or authorize who could be a clerk and who can not be a clerk?
No.
So we have no way of really making this happen?
From my vantage point, this board can only judge performance, it can't judge potential, and it can't judge intent. To do anything else puts us in uncharted territory. So while all the best of intentions have been described here, we get to judge what's left behind. I said four weeks ago, and I'll say it again tonight, this fits a fact pattern of multiple instances, multiple reported, multiple persons with a report that Redding has a, this particular facility in Redding has a reputation of serving to minors. If there are three reports, my experience in life is there are 300, you've just scratched the surface, it's an iceberg, 90% of it is unseen. In point of fact, there were two charges for possession and attempt to purchase, so I would argue at a minimum, there are two offenses tonight, two independent persons who attempted to purchase and were successful. And as I said in the first meeting, there are aggravating circumstances, this just fits the fact pattern of a willingness and an intent to do it. I don't know whether Mr. Armstrong is at fault, and I don't care whether Mr. Armstrong is at fault. One of the rights and responsibility of ownership is leadership and owning up to the results, good or bad. I don't enjoy doing this, and I'm sure none of the board takes any particular pleasure, and I don't mean to sound like I'm lecturing, I, we all get graded on what we do, and we'll grade tonight on what we've seen here. For the rest of the board's advice, I did ask town council and Mr. Mayares, please jump in here at any moment, but I'll read from the document you prepared for me. For the balance of the board, the Liquor Control Act under Mass General law grants both a local licensing authority, that's us, and the Alcoholic Beverages Commission, that's the state agency, authority to revoke or suspend a liquor license for the offense of selling or distributing alcohol to a minor. That licensee may grieve that decision to the ABC, and in preparation for tonight, I tried to establish both what was precedent in practice to guide what we might elect to do. The key issues here are whether substantial evidence supports the finding of the violation, that's point one, and point two is whether the penalty we propose or impose tonight is reasonable. And there's a number of pieces of case law which I won't take the time to read, but substantial evidence is evidence that a reasonable mind might accept is adequate to support a conclusion. Once we've determined that there is substantial evidence to support a finding that Ricky's Liquor has again sold alcohol to a minor, the primary issue is what penalty is reasonable, and determining what's reasonable is fact-specific. In assessing that, what the ABCC is going to consider is the nature of the violation, the number, the frequency of such violations, whether our behavior and actions comport with our own written policy, and whether similar penalties are imposed on other licensees who commit similar violations. Footnote, we don't have any other licensees who've committed similar violations in their history provided to us tonight. In practice, I'm advised by town council that ABCC has not upheld many revocations, and again, there's a fairly long history to support that fact. However, before we proceed, what I'd like to do is have the board take a posture, a formal posture, whether it views that there is substantial evidence of a regular business of selling to minors based both on tonight's evidence and the larger context of the events of about a month ago. John?
Yeah. Point of order, should we close the hearing before we get to this end of the discussion?
Is there any other public?
Thank you. Any other public here? Mr. Croft?
Steven Croft, come down to the front. Mr. Chairman, Steven Croft, Pleasant Street, Redding. I believe all five of the members, I hope, got my email today?
Yes, we did.
So you know where I stand, so I don't, you know, just beyond five days after a hearing before this, they have another incident, not five minutes after they have a third incident of sale. I feel at a minimum you should revoke the license outright. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, I'm sorry, Stan, just introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Steven Cassidy. I've been in Redding my entire life.
Where do you live?
I live across, on Cross Street in Redding. I think we play discos together. Yeah.
You guys can chat later.
But anyways, this is totally unscripted. I first want to say that I've known Mr. Patel for many, many years, ever since I was a young girl. He and his wife are lovely people. I live really close by to this store, and I was a frequent merchant of the convenience store in Ricky's Liquors. I got to know Bruce. In my line of business, I just love everyone, and I, many times, I don't text and drive, I don't talk and drive unless it's my kid on the phone, I say, "I'm driving, I'll call you right back," and when I get to a stop, I'll talk or I'll text, so many times after I have my own business, I work late at night, and I'll get milk, I'll get a bottle of wine, I'll go home, and many times I would be sitting there, and there would be cars there with children in it, young kids, and like, the ones in the backseat were like this, and I'm like, "No, you know, no big deal." Many times when I was in the store, there would be a young kid there, and they wouldn't be IDed, sometimes they would be IDed. I didn't know anything was going on, I was very friendly with Bruce, as a matter of fact, I loved to cook, holidays he would be up there working, he worked so hard for Mr. Patel. I set my daughter up, bring Bruce up a plate, you know, because the poor guy's working there on a holiday, bring him up a plate of dinner. That's how far I go. This particular, my son was the one who went in to purchase the alcohol, totally flabbergasted by his behavior because it was just really the most foolish thing ever, but when I found out that it had happened before this, and these young kids, all of a sudden, I'm going back, and my thoughts, like, I remember this time I was there, and then this time I was there, and seeing these kids all nervous, and seeing other children, and I was so furious, and I even wanted to say to him, "You are really stupid, why didn't you fire him the first time?" I go, "Why didn't you fire Bruce the first time?" Because I walked in, I go, "That was my son." He says, "Bruce was fired," I go, "Why didn't you fire him the first time? Why? He had a chance." And I think this man is a lovely man, and I think his wife is as sweet as they come. And my mother, who was a cranky old woman, who's been passed away six years now, they were so darn nice to her, I mean, it was like, I loved everyone who was nice to my mom because she was kind of cranky. And it was just like, we've been going to this store for so many years, I feel awful, but I also need to, I'm thinking, all these children, and as a business owner, I'm an esthetician, I do skincare and waxing, I have a lot of young kids. I've reached out to my son's friends, the girls, "Oh, yeah, everyone knows..." Everyone knows Bruce North Redding, Melrose, Wakefield, Redding, everyone goes to Ricky's Liquors. I'm like, "Are you kidding me, Danielle?" She goes, "No, it's well-known, everybody knows about it, you can always make a deal with Bruce." And I'm thinking, and these were the couple of days after the incident happened, and then I, that's when I went up and I charged up to him, and I'm like, "What are you doing? Why didn't you, why didn't you fight him first? And why did you let this happen?" And I'm really disappointed. I was a month old when we moved into this city, into this town, and I've lived here my entire life. I lived in Wakefield for seventeen years, but I was in Redding every single day. I never left Redding Co-op, I never left The Atlantic until they closed. This is my town, and I was so happy to move back into it, and I'm really disappointed. And when I found out that the first incident happened, I said, "They're not getting shut down until, they didn't get, they weren't going to get shut down for four days until September? Why? Because of due process? How does this, well, then when I found out all these children are buying, and I'm looking at my son's phone that I put on my nightstand because I wouldn't let him have it after he got caught buying, and I'm looking at all these kids. I'm not going to give away anyone." Saying, you know, all this stuff, and I'm like, "Oh, my God, this just goes so far beyond what I ever imagined." And I'm really hurt, and I'm really disappointed because they're making a mockery out of us in Redding. And he had the chance, and I'm so sorry to stand up here and plead myself, because I think, once again, you were a really wonderful man, but you, and you had a really poor choice. You should have taken something the first time.
I can give you one more chance, that's the only thing.
You had two chances, the third time, you're out. Is someone going to get killed next time? These young children, well, obviously not, because I applaud you now, working even that much more, because I know how hard you work. Now you're not letting anyone else at your helm, you shouldn't have done it the first time. That's all I have to say.
Yeah. I thought you're doing an honest mistake, you know?
It's not an honest mistake, it's a blatant mistake.
No, first time. That's why I said I do the second chance.
Just keep your comments to the board, to the air place.
So, once again, I think, you know, like I said, it was unscripted, I'm, I'm sitting here with my hot pound, and my eyes are going all over the room, I'm just trying to hold things in, I'm just very passionate about this, because of what I've heard, that I cannot say, because I will not give away any other children in this town of Redding or in Wakefield, but what I've heard is despicable with what's gone on in this store.
Thank you for your comments.
Bill McCafferty here. The only thing I'd like to say is that although, although I'm not happy with my son for the poor decision that he made, certainly, I think everything happens for a reason, and I think that by this happening, might have saved somebody else's life down the road, because as a business owner and as a leader, you are not doing your job, and you're lucky you didn't kill someone indirectly. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. McCafferty, your address is?
Same.
Sorry.
Cross Street.
Cross Street.
Sixty-two Cross Street.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the public comments. John?
I, you know, I'm going to, I believe that, you know, this person has been nice to your family, and he may be a nice person, and I don't question that, but that really has nothing to do with this discussion, in my opinion. I mean, it becomes, I thought it was painfully clear at our last visit, the seriousness of this, and that there was genuine concern that although there was one violation, it was a, it was a pattern that we were pretty sure had gone on a lot. And so, you know, we couldn't have been clearer. I mean, your judgment regarding your liquor license has been very interesting. You hired a person who you thought was a good person, but you chose not, you chose for over six months, and you admitted this at the last meeting, to not train him. And then, I guess he got trained in the intervening five-day window between, you know, Tuesday of your hearing and suspension and Sunday, but it doesn't seem like it took. And what this is indicative, in my opinion, are several things. Based on what we just heard from Mrs. McCafferty, obviously, I'm not going to ask her to somehow substantiate who did what, who where, I would never ask that, but I believe her that she's been able to establish in her own mind that there is a strong pattern of this going on. I felt that way at the last meeting. I was stunned by the lack of importance attached to this at the last meeting. And then, frankly, much as, you know, I've been only a board of selectmen member for a matter of months, but it's been my business. I have, I have a lot of connections to a lot of young people in this town who have started down a path of substance abuse, who are in the ground. So, this has been a mission for me. And for the last five years, anytime there was a hearing on this topic, I was here, every single time. And I can tell you, I'm appalled, in that window of the last five or six years, I've never seen anybody repeat, I've never seen it, it's, you know, for our officers to need to be distracted because they know this is going on, it's just a question of, you know, parking the car and shooting the duck on the pond. It's really that simple for them to do this. That's stunning to me. And it, and it does indicate a fact pattern, as you ask about, John. You know, I mean, I don't know whether revocation is the right answer, but I know a couple of days is not the right answer. Okay? I know that, at least in my mind. You know, I get that a lot of people could say that you're a good person who's been in business here a long time. As I said, that's kind of irrelevant to me that you're a good person, I'm sure you are. Your judgment as a business owner with a liquor license is extremely flawed, extremely flawed. And that causes me a problem as a guy that sits here and needs to think about passing judgment on what to do next. You know, I also recognize that, you know, a year or so, a year or so ago, you made a decision to expand your business, you spent money in order to be able to do that, I'm respectful of that. But again, it comes back to the, I mean, you're, there's judgment in question here. And I will tell you frankly, the idea of a handful of days is unthinkable to me. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not convinced that revoking this license is the appropriate thing to do for a lot of reasons. But I do think, you know, ninety days to think about it is probably not a bad idea, and that's kind of where my head is on this, I'll just tell you that right now.
Marcy?
Yeah, I think that the last time that you were in here and we had, we had this, there was clear evidence, clearly, the kids who are here were from another town, so you know that it's happened before because you don't have people just drop into a town and try to buy liquor. They said they had been here multiple times, so we, we had that.
Police.
Educates. And they told the police that, and generally, you don't tell the police, "I've been here before." You're going to say, "No, this is the first time I've been here," if anything. This time, we have the same thing, we do have two more incidents, so really, we have three firm incidents, right? The last time, these two, we've got the repeat of people who've come before, we've got the repeat of people coming from out of town. So, we have a lot of evidence in my mind that this has occurred pretty extensively. We have videotaped them not checking, checking this. So, I think it's something that's really pretty substantial. Looking at some of this, I think that revoking it is probably too big a jump, but I think that a few days is definitely too little. I also believe, last time we were here, we asked when it should happen, I don't believe that we should ever ask when this happens, I believe that it should be immediate. I believe every time we do this, it ought to start on a Friday, it should be at the point of the, when it's going to hurt the most for someone, regardless of any of these offenses. I don't think we give people options on that, quite frankly.
That's only a suggestion to us.
That's, that's, yeah, that's just my, you know, that's just my opinion.
What is it?
But I would like to ask a question. So, I believe you said that you've bought the machine that allows to check varieties. Is it installed? Is it at the register?
Yeah, it is.
Has it been used? Do you, are you able to check and see how many times it's been used? Is that?
Yeah.
How many times it's used?
In other words, every time you scan an ID, you know, you.
And you got the records, every day, how many you did it, you know? Plus, they view time too, what time you did it.
So, when was this machine installed?
The machine came after the incident happened.
The latest?
I don't know what date, what date, when they come in. I don't remember the date when they come.
I'm just, I'm just curious because I wonder if, you know, that's some, some evidence in the future to ensure that there's been some, some checking and that kind of thing. I mean, my inclination would be something that's pretty serious, like sixty days in addition to the prior violation, which still hasn't happened, right? You know what I mean?
Before we proceed, I'd like the board to take a formal posture on whether.
Do you want to close?
Yes.
Do you want to ask for any other?
Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, move that the board of selectmen close the hearing on the possible modification, suspension, and revocation of the retail package store license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages for J. and Ricky, Inc., D B A Ricky's Liquor, two fourteen Main Street, for violating M G L Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under twenty-one years of age.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing? Five zero. Thank you, Dan.
Do you want to move to the next piece here, the?
No, actually, before we do that, I'd like to, I'd like the board to take a formal posture publicly as to whether each of us believes that there is substantial effort, evidence of a regular business practice of selling to minors, both what we've heard here tonight in the larger context of the activities of the last time Mr. O'Connell was in front of us.
I would move to support that contention.
All those in favor of the statement that they believe there's substantial evidence of a regular business practice, raise your hand. Five zero. Okay, thank you. I'm in favor of a ninety-day suspension. I'm in favor of a ninety-day suspension because I think, one, there needs to be a substantial message sent that we, this board, one, has a proportional response to a proportional problem or proportional incident. I can't imagine a circumstance where this much evidence exists, where there is not a preponderance of other cases that just haven't made it to the surface. This is an iceberg. We're seeing ten percent of the problem. I was very interested to find after the last meeting, and I asked our authorities to please keep an eye and make sure that the corrective actions were taken and that the behavior was stopped. And obviously, the cost of shutting down for four days does not outweigh the benefit of selling to minors. So, therefore, ninety days, I think, captures the attention. It also sends a message to all of the other alcohol-based businesses in town that this board will act in a proportional manner, based on the circumstances, always being proportional to our, taking into account our guidelines, but not being bound by the language, by taking into account all of the context. So, I'm in favor of a ninety-day suspension to be served immediately, as it can be imposed, consistent with the existing four days, and I'll leave it to Chief Cormier to help understand, and Bob, to understand how best to do that. I know there's a dovetail of two different.
So, is that ninety-four days?
It is, I'm just not sure if it's A then B then A.
Do we have the right to have it concurrent or consecutive?
You do have the right to have it concurrent or consecutive. The last time, we voted for four specific days.
Yes.
So, what you need to do is to, as part of your motion, to modify the previous vote so that the four days are assert at the beginning or at the end of whatever you decide is the, is the time now.
So, just a suggestion, procedurally, we should try to proceed to the next motion to the finding, and then we can debate the schedule.
Yeah.
If there's more to add here.
No, go ahead. Okay. Move the board of selectmen find J. and Ricky, Inc., D B A Ricky's Liquor, two fourteen Main Street, Redding, in violation of M G L Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under twenty-one years of age on August third, two thousand and fourteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
John seconds. All those in favor? Five zero.
Do we know the dates of the?
Prior.
Of the current, the four-day dates?
It's mid-September.
Not sure, we need to know that.
It should be in the minutes, but.
The minutes, I don't know.
Yeah, there you go.
Bob, you don't have any kind of suggested motions for the?
Fifty through nineteen.
Fifty through eighteen.
Thinking this, attacking the fore on.
One suggestion as well, too, before we get into exactly when and where.
Yeah.
You know, I'd almost, I'd almost like to, for two things, see, see the ninety-day suspension start in October, not immediately. And my reason for this is, you know, it does seem like this was a bad employee, and that's a bad decision you made, certainly, so it reflects all the way up to the top. But I'd like to see if they can not have another violation in one month period of time, almost a probationary period, to then serve starting on October first, a ninety-day suspension.
Well, you know, to that end, Kevin, the license, I believe, will come up for renewal the first of January, is that approximately correct?
Beginning of December.
So, the probationary period could occur after.
It'll be at your last November meeting, whenever that is.
So, this will expire at about the time when these licenses come up for renewal for fifteen.
Okay, so it's not, it's not in January, then?
It's a January date, I think, but it sounds like.
But the decision will be made. It has to be into the state in early December.
So, it'll be, it'll dovetail with the meeting that we hold. Right? Makes sense?
So, so, no, so then there won't be any probationary, there won't be any, any period.
Yeah.
They will go directly from suspension to having a hearing.
Renewal, correct. Correct.
I can actually see a little bit of benefit in that.
And it's also, you know, giving, giving a business owner the chance to say, "Okay, hopefully it was a bad employee."
The only problem is, what if something does happen in there?
It's not our problem.
Well, it's our problem.
Not tonight.
If something happens, it is our problem.
But it's not tonight.
And here's the thing.
And that's kind of my point, is to see if, if the business can right itself.
I really do understand what you're saying, Kevin, but to the, to the point of the, of the parents here, I mean, do we, do we honestly take a chance on somebody who had, has displayed such bad judgment to potentially turn a kid loose on the street? I mean, that's kind of where I'm coming from, you know? I mean, the thought of it is mortifying to me.
This business has had a million chances already, Kevin, it's just that nobody was watching. So, one more. Maybe there's merit in it?
No, John brings up a good point. Mine wasn't really necessarily to give the business a chance, but to make sure that it's not happening again.
The next time to, you know, to the.
Bigger point in relation to that.
I mean, thank God, at least what we're aware of.
To the best of your knowledge.
To the best of our knowledge, the sale of this alcohol to minors has not resulted in a tragedy that we're aware of. We don't really know, to be honest with you, if there's any connection between regional, they're coming from everywhere. If there's a regional tragedy that's reconnected here, you know, I think, to me, it would start tomorrow, and the four days that are, that are already owed can either, you can either start with them or finish with them, I don't really care. But to me, you know, the ninety days is, is appropriate, given all of the circumstances that I, that I feel like I've been made aware of over the course of the last two visits here. And I'm just not willing to take a chance, personally, you know? I mean, the idea of taking a chance on. on kids in this town and other towns, um, based on the performance of judgment as the, of this business owner to date, you know, when, when it relates his liquor license. Now, you know, he's run a successful business next door for years, and that's great. Um, and, you know, I'm not suggesting that we somehow, you know, trash his opportunity to make his investment good at some point in the future. I know that, you know, we spent some money to build that out and has spent money to stock it, and, and I think, you know, an appropriate amount of time to come up with a strategy, a business strategy. He's taken some steps, you know, the machine's great. It doesn't, doesn't matter.
But, but the, the machine won't matter unless you check the IDs.
And, you know, you've got to have somebody who actually is, you've got to be willing to either hire somebody. I, I, you know, I, I believe that this man and his wife could probably, I guess the place is open, I don't know how many hours. I guess that if that's all you do, then that's what you could do. Um, but at a certain point, you know, the investment of time and energy in finding the right person, and there'll certainly be plenty of time to do that under what we're suggesting, and to get that person or persons trained in advance, I mean, you know, to me, I, the past was last time.
Yeah, this is the now.
Yeah.
This is the now. This is not, it's not time for past.
And our, and the peer firms in town that sell alcohol do not seem to have as big a problem finding talent. So if nothing else, look where they're looking. Um, I'll entertain a motion now, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, uh, move that Jay and Ricky, Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquor, two fourteen Main Street, Reading, be penalized with a ninety-day suspension for violation of MGL Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages to a person under twenty-one years of age on August third, two thousand and fourteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
John seconds. Any discussions? Bob?
If you, if you, for some reason, want to combine it with the old one?
I, I'm going to work that into the next motion. Should I do that here?
Should you do it now, or is that okay?
Yeah, you can work into the next motion.
Okay. And you can listen to the verbiage and admonish me as needed.
In this motion, we have not set a date to commence that.
Correct.
We were going to ask, yeah.
That's in the, that's in the next motion.
Uh, any, just any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Five zero. Great.
Move that the ninety-day suspension for Jay and Ricky, Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquor, two fourteen Main Street, Reading, take place on September third, two thousand and fourteen. That would be tomorrow. And I'm adding the following verbiage: That the previously imposed four-day suspension be served upon expiration of this ninety-day suspension. And I'm picking up at the, what's on the paper here. That the license be surrendered to the office of the town manager no later than nine AM the first day of the suspension, to be returned to the licensee by nine AM the first day following the suspension, and that a placard be placed on the premises during the period of suspension indicating the business is unable to sell liquor due to a suspension of the liquor license for sale of liquor to an underage person, and that Jay and Ricky Incorporated reimburse the town of Reading for constable and advertising fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
John seconds. Any discussions?
Is that verbiage sort of?
That's fine.
Okay.
You might want to send that to Paul.
I will.
Okay.
You got it. You got that.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? The motion? Five zero. Guess we're done.
Thank you for all who-
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Participate.
I'm sorry we had to meet into such circumstances.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your camera.
Thank you, officers. Thank you, chief.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your camera.
Thank you, officers. Thank you, chief.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Yes.
Minutes.
Yes.
You don't see terms like that, correct?
You take, you take our license. They can, but they can stay.
You can't stay.
Yeah.
Come on.
So the stake is out. Stake, so the stake is out.
Okay. Okay, why don't we? Let's see, next on the agenda is closing the warrant for the special town meeting on September 29th. In front of you in your package is a copy of the draft.
Yeah, on page 13 from tonight, Town Council, you got a draft on Thursday. Town Council actually slightly rewarded some of the early articles, which is interesting because they're bond articles. And he said, "Oh, I know who your bond council is just from reading these." He said, "I bet you've done them this way for a long time." I said, "Yes."
So he's rewarded them.
So he's rewarded the debt articles. The zoning ones are all as he had previously approved. And he didn't obviously change any intent, he just wordsmithed.
Marcy?
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if we might be able to cover the financial components first so Mr. Doxter does not need to wait until the end?
That's a...
As our lone member of the public here.
Absolutely not.
Go ahead, Congress.
So that would be to take out of order the Article 14.
You mean specifically 14 and 15?
14 and 15, correct.
Well, we need to do the closing first.
Yes.
Right.
5E. Well...
Well...
Do we need to...
You could read the motion but not vote on it yet because you need to know how many articles.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so read the motion. We just want to act on it.
With the Board of Select and close the warrant consisting of the 15 articles for the September 29th, 2014 special town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion now.
Before we vote...
I wouldn't suggest your vote till you go over 14.
No, not gonna vote.
Right.
Not gonna vote.
Okay.
We're gonna have over. So why don't we take, if there's no other objections, 14 and 15 out of order?
Do you want me to take a crack at explaining them or do you want...
Please, why don't you, for at least, at least uniformity of explanation.
Okay. Article 14 is using the current laws as applied to the Finance Committee in Reading. And authorizing them and requesting them to investigate at once the Light Department specifically about the procurement issue. The reason this article is in here at all is because without this direction right now, under the general bylaws and the charter, the Finance Committee has no authority to do that. The Finance Committee has full authority to do that already with the town and the schools. And I would assume and I would encourage them to investigate all three. I don't want this to be a witch hunt on just one. But without this Article 14, perhaps in what we might discuss next, they have no authority to do that. But that's a standalone.
Is there a reason you did that order of the two articles?
Yes.
I would...
John and I talked about it. I don't know that there was any real magic to it, but this one seems...
Allows us to bring up the whole reason that we're going to the next one, right?
Why should I act on language that already exists today that people should be in theory comfortable with? And then say, "By the way, something wrong with that."
This can happen under the current language, but then the charge will be under the language of Article 15.
And I think under Article 15...
No, no.
No. Article 14 will instruct the Finance Committee, I should say request the Finance Committee, to conduct an investigation.
Right.
Separate and apart from 15, but then...
And that's a standalone thought.
Yeah.
The second part of the thought is Article 15, if approved as written, would give the Finance Committee that right without such an article in the future.
Without town meeting.
So currently, this would, the intention was always to allow the Finance Committee to do this. However, the way that it's written, the duties state that they can only advise us on things that come in the town warrant.
Yes, in the form of an article.
So we have an article now that allows them to go out and do this, but this allows them then to also more broadly investigate things once they get the signatures and it's been approved.
A hundred inhabitants, yeah.
So...
So it's, it's just...
I missed that point before.
It's qualified by a hundred inhabitants, so you've got a filter, if you will, of reasonableness there. Further, the expenditure funds to conduct that investigation or inquiry is conditioned by approval of the Finance Appointment Committee, not a single person, but three persons. So you've got another reasonableness test there that you've got to convince at least two out of three that the proposal is worthy.
Right.
So a hundred, a hundred people can make them spend money out of the reserve fund and that's...
No, a hundred people can propose it and then two of the three must agree. So the Finance Appointment Committee is the moderator, the chair of the Board of Selectmen and the chair of the FinCom. So the finance, those three people have to, two of the three must agree to spend the money.
If money's needed.
If money's needed, right.
Yes.
That seems reasonable.
So we didn't want just one person to approve it, which is the way it was originally written.
This gives a lot of authority, but we wanted to temper it with some check steps.
Right.
Yep.
Just to be clear, the meaning of that first sentence is the Finance Committee may do this of their own choosing at any time.
Right.
End of that thought.
Okay.
They must do it if a hundred inhabitants petition them to do it. Then they have no choice. So that's the distinction.
Okay.
So, but the FinCom Appointment Committee can nullify the, well, the hundred inhabitants by not spending the money.
They can prevent the spending of money.
Only the spending of money, not the investigation.
It's not clear whether an investigation would require money if, if FinCom just needs to coordinate with internal people, town accountant.
So the town accountant seller would not, that's all paid anyway.
This is if somebody outside of town government and the schools...
You have to hire somebody outside.
All right, that seems okay.
If you're hiring someone to go into forensic.
I get it.
Right. Does this compel, this language only covers the FinCom, so this doesn't change the posture of any group being investigated to play nice and behave and cooperate?
No.
All right.
And then just to sort of go to the third leg of the stool, which isn't, it is in an article, but it's, it's something that's going to be discussed, is the charter as written is not the charter a lot of people think it is, as was discussed 15 years ago. And that's going to be a discussion that this board will need to have with or without the Light Department in the future as to whether you want to propose any action in November town meeting, I'm sorry, January town meeting that deals with the charter. So right now, you know, some things in the charter give the Light Department quite a lot of autonomy. And that's a separate thought, but it's important to keep in the back of your mind that that, that is not the point of either of these articles. These articles are just for the Finance Committee. There is a third issue out there, for better or worse, to be decided, however it's decided, that the charter itself does not address the Light Department the way I think a lot of people believe the town meeting believes that it should have.
Should be.
And actually, that, that is related to 14. That's the reason why we believe there needs to be a finance investigation is because there's too much autonomy, really. And then whereas the town accountant reports to us...
Right.
The town, the accountant for RMLD reports to the general manager, general manager has full control of that.
So Article 14 is a one-time charge?
Correct.
Yes.
Not a ongoing thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it ends presumably with a report in November town meeting.
Yes, Marcy.
I would ask that...
Mark.
Pursuant to what Bob had said also, given that Article 14 has a date served on November 10th, and my point was the possibility of investigating or doing an inquiry into the town and the RMLD and the schools, they probably have a little, little tight timeframe to do all three. And my, my guess is that the intent here is very much focused on one particular activity first.
If I may, I suggest you have that discussion with the town accountant. She's out the rest of the week, she'll be in next week. She may be able to give you a lot of help along those lines. You know, to speak for the school department, which I don't usually do, they don't have a lot of procurement that's going to fall under this, this type of investigation. They, they collaborate with a lot of other school departments in a collaborative, I think it's called. We generally dispose of their vehicles for them, so it's not a lot on the school side. It's not like this, they're two-thirds, one-third. And the town, we have pretty good records and she's been providing them all, so it shouldn't be difficult for she, her to transfer those to you. And I'll just let her talk to you about the Light Department if not as familiar.
Is it as specific as just procurement activities? Because I'm reading, I'm not reading that in the language, I'm reading something much broader.
No.
You know, the, the language is, it is broad.
It is, it is broad.
It is broad.
I don't, I don't think we want to tie our hands to what you might learn.
Right.
Right.
We know of a procurement issue that's been alleged and reported on. If the Finance Committee finds all manner of other things for any one of us, you could certainly stand up in November town meeting and say, "We're not going to have much more because we're still working and people will be fine with that."
Plus the 14 kind of is a directive, the 15 empowers you to do whatever you want, whatever you need to do.
Right.
Which I think was really unclear in the first place.
What have a different version?
You know, even if you make a decision as a Finance Committee...
Because they already have the authority to develop, you don't need that authority.
Worrying here, that doesn't stop you from the next one.
Okay.
And Marc, so if you find any threads you tug on, you can chase those threads down. You're not constrained. It's with particularity to this issue, but you follow whereon the evidence station is?
Actually, my question is not so much that as thinking about the possibility of looking at all three groups at the same time, when it might make a lot more sense to do them sequentially with one having...
Yeah, Marcy.
That actually makes, I think that makes sense. I think that, well, I think if you do them one at a time, and there's one that's screaming for it. So, and then it just hit, and to not necessarily pick on one over the other, but you know, it's the one that's got it, it's front and center, so do that first. Get that one done and then it's probably not a bad idea, you know, follow the trail wherever it leads you in, in all the various...
The data speaks for itself, huh?
So given, given what you just said, does it make sense to propose some different language before we close this warrant on November 10th? Given that we're going to, we know there's going to be a town meeting to address the charter issues.
That date isn't met, what's the consequence?
Yeah, that seems rather inflexible.
Well, the report may say we have inconclusive findings at this time.
Do they have a vehicle then to continue beyond November? This would say no.
15. 15 says...
So 14 requires...
15 says if they are done in time...
It also says recommendations, so they, so they could come and say, "Well, this is what we found so far, but we recommend that you give us more time."
Yeah.
Because, yeah. So it is, it's broad and bold.
I understand, but I'd rather have 14 stand on its own feet and have 15, and not necessarily, I get your point, but if 15 gets held up or...
You're right. Well, you could certainly change it to as soon as possible.
Instead of prior to a date, it could be as soon as possible.
Does it reflect a target date as November 10th or as, or sooner or...
Or it's such future town meeting, I don't want to get too...
I would say as prior to November 10th or, or if, if practical or any date.
Again, it's not, it's not saying that it has to be a complete report.
Right.
Right, it's saying that you're going to set forth your findings and recommendations and give that report.
It says and transmit the report.
Right, so report of the findings and recommendations as opposed to the report of recommendations.
Could be board of progress in November and then a final report.
Here's what we have so far, we need more time.
Yeah.
That word of advice.
Or being something we get in writing and goes into...
I think the current wording is allowed.
They're not done by that time. Reports half big, they're not done.
It's, it's not, you're thinking report as in it's a final report. This is a report on what they have found.
It's a progress report.
It's a progress report.
On what their findings are and...
And their recommendations.
I thought you said the language is open enough to allow...
It's very open for, yeah.
That's, that's, that's a whole reason that...
Report of progress.
It was drafted this way, correct?
And then a final report, that's another concept.
Okay. So this language would be a report of progress then?
I don't think we should be...
I think findings and recommendations is...
No, the findings and recommendations...
Ray's already written this.
Very well.
The council already wrote this, knowing what we...
Ray has reviewed this against 164.
I just don't, that's all.
And, and just to reiterate, the purpose of this article is not exclusively to pick on the Light Department, it's to add the Light Department into the mix of things they can already do.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want to take a posture?
Yes.
Does the board want to take a posture on these two over there in front of the center?
Well, we've got to close the warrant that we can do.
So...
The procedure closes on the vote.
Then we'll just take them one at a time.
Right.
You have to, you have to discuss these because that, if one of these is good and one of these you decide not to do, that's how we argue.
Right.
They're paired, yeah.
Right. The motion is still on, you're closed.
All right, so why don't we go back to top of the warrant.
5E, right.
Yeah. 5E?
We've already done the, we just need to vote.
It's been seconded, we just need to vote, right? Someone seconded?
Yes.
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion 5E to close the warrant? Five zero, okay.
Now you may want to take 5F, Articles 14 and 15 right now, I'll mark here.
Motion is motion.
Page two, you got it.
With the Board of Selectmen recommend the subject matter of Article 14 of the September 29th special town meeting warrant.
The second. Marcy seconds, discussion, no discussion. All those in favor, five zero.
With the Board of Selectmen recommend the subject matter of Article 15 of the September 29th, 2014 special town meeting warrant.
Do I have a second? Marcy seconds again, discussion, no discussion. All those in favor, five zero.
Okay.
Go back to the top of 5F.
Some of these I don't really need to...
Want me to take a quick pass? We could start on page 27 of tonight's.
Yeah.
The warrant is up front, I'll go through the warrant report, it still is in draft form. Town Council was very eager to get his little hands on Articles 1, 2, and 3. Paul and I held him off for now. The belief that these are required, at least two of them are backed up by instructional motions. One of them was what, the 1930s or something? So there is no, there is no bylaw and there is no, nothing in the charter that says you must have reports as stated in Article 1. To me, if it was because of an instructional motion from whatever it was, it should have then found its way into a bylaw or the charter. And not just be historically remembering that someone made an instructional motion.
Instructional motion is not a bylaw.
No, and it's not binding.
Nope.
Yeah.
The list on Article 1 is, I'll say, a bizarre list. If you look at who's listed and who isn't listed. So I suggested to council if we look at this in the leisure of time and we clean it up for November or April. And he was fine with that. And the same with Articles 2. And then Article 3, we had a little harder time finding that, although I, I know I read it somewhere once where we have to amend the capital plan at every town meeting.
Oh, at every town?
Whenever there is a discussion.
Oh, I thought it was just when there was a change.
Nope.
Oh.
The article has to be, you table it, you didn't have anything to do. But to, just to take you through the article, I don't know of anything in Article 2 that may come up, you know, for instructional motions. Sometimes at this point I know, but I don't really, yeah. On page 28, Article 3 moves a significant amount of capital around. We've worked with especially DPW and facilities for the last month. We're going to request 266,000 to be spent in September, and I'll detail that on another page. But then the big chunk, we're looking for 680,000 in November town meeting. And one of the reasons for the difference is free cash is not yet certified and will not be, I'll say, by September 29th. So we can't use free cash to balance our budget in September. We can in November, and I believe free cash will be pretty attractive. We then cut a lot of...
Is that normal timing?
Uh, yes. Mid-October is, is typical. We then almost balance the FY '16 capital plan depending on what the Finance Committee does to the, the rules on that. And we have a small piece of juggling to do in the water fund. Do you want me to just run through all these quickly rather than you voting on one at a time?
Absolutely.
Article 4 is to dispose of a piece of equipment that in retrospect we should have taken care of last April, but didn't. We'll make sure that it's bid carefully.
Thank you.
We have good paperwork on all of our past transactions, so. Article 5 is to effectively wipe off the book some debt that we did not need to issue. So we have the authorization from town meeting, this removes that authorization. Article 6 is somewhat similar, but it's actual debt we've issued and it's money we don't need anymore for those three projects. So the three projects on the top of 31, including a really small one, have all been closed out. And that money is extra, so we're going to ask it to be assigned to the West Street project, which still hasn't had a bid in yet, so we don't know what it's going to cost.
So we're just moving around?
We're just moving that around. We have to spend it on something, there's rules about that, West Street is eligible as a, as a project. Article 7 is to get debt authorization for the Water Department. I'm not going to go into great detail tonight, but it has to do with a long-range capital plan that Water has. And the two and a half million will give the town flexibility to advance some work. Because we got such a large loan from Fred at the MWRA with no interest costs, we did not expect to be able to qualify all at once for four million, we got just a little over four million. We got five years' worth of money fronted to us. So because of the lack of interest payments, we're able to speed up some other work, which is really nice. Article 8 is spending money. The bottom line in the middle section there is we're going to recognize the additional state aid we got. And we're going to need to increase our excise tax revenue by a little bit. Attention shoppers.
Somebody's kicking the power outlets, so please remove your feet from the power outlet.
It's still going, still kicking.
Might want to open that door for a quick exit. So you can see the 266,000 in requested capital is more than paid for by the fact we will not have debt service payments for West Street. We expected that project to be bid last spring when we budgeted. It still has not yet come in. Clearly, my words, the construction will not happen until next spring. That's not been formally announced, but they haven't even accepted bids yet, or they haven't closed them yet. So it's just not going to happen. And you can see, a lot of the juggling in there is things that we knew about and were discussed even in April town meeting. The one thing that's a little bit new and one, frankly, one of the two causes of this town meeting is the 100,000 in legal expenses is not because of Ray, all part of it is. It's because the high school TLT litigation is a, is a technically complex issue. And the long and short of it is we now have to spend money out of the operating budget for litigation that we were spending out of a reserve fund for the high school project. We're not able to do that anymore because a creditor hasn't joined those funds. So we have to now pay out of a different pocket. It's going to not affect the ultimate outcome, whatever that is, it just affects what we are allowed to pay.
What's the estimate of time to completion for that whole?
I have no idea.
Do you have an opinion?
My opinion is it would have been done years ago. And last January, I would have said it would have been complete by May or June. It's in front of a master.
That seemed to have a sense that it was going to be done this summer.
Yeah. There's been a variety of reasons unrelated to us or TLT. The other creditor just jumped in and said, "We're attaching everything on your, all your assets."
So we're really, you know, just going to buy it, have to pay a bill or we're going to have to pay any...
Because of the free cash.
Yeah, it doesn't cost any more or any less, we just pay it a different way. Article 9 starts the zoning. Go simply, and Marcy, please jump in if you need to. Article 9 simply replaces, or Section 1, which is the purpose of the bylaws, and a restatement of the purpose.
And it's just, just reorganized a little bit, so it's...
Traditionally, the Board of Selectmen has not voted support on zoning articles.
And I have not put you down as a report for this.
But we could.
But you could, especially where you had a liaison on the ZAC.
That could have been their rule.
I would, no, I would recommend that you go ahead and support it. I don't see any downside on it.
You're the chair, so it's all a reason that.
That's a, you have an opinion now.
Article 10 is similar, it's, it's Section 3. It's the list of districts. It does not change the zoning map, although it did change some typos. Article 11 and Article 12 are going to leading sections. And I don't remember which is which, I used to. One of them is, do you remember, Marcy, the wetland?
Wetland protection or the archer?
One of them is...
No, no, it's not the archer.
It's not the archer, it's the wetlands.
It's the wetland protection because it's a duplication and they have a letter from the Conservation Commission stating that they're in favor of that particular deletion.
Is it a duplication with state?
It's a duplication with...
No, it's something that's not needed, not necessary.
It's not needed, it's not necessary, it's never been used.
Okay.
And the other article is similar. It's something that's zoning, it's just never been used.
Oh, it's, oh, you know what it is? It's a, it's some business district, but the down tearing, down smart growth is, is basically what anybody would use. It's never been used, so that's the other one.
This is housekeeping.
It's, it's essentially cleaning up, we're streamlining it.
The first four articles really are housekeeping, if you have one.
That's true.
Article 13 is more than housekeeping, it's where to zone medical marijuana dispensaries at. There's a letter that'll go in as a report from our castle, as John mentioned, they voted, I think it was 17 to 0, support this. And they were very appreciative of being included in the discussions, so.
Yeah, that was, I think that was a really important gesture.
It was, yeah, important to get their input and...
And then you've looked at Articles 14 and 15 already.
I can say with some time, make a plenary motion if this works.
Actually, just a quick, back on the medical marijuana, but like maybe last meeting, there was some discussion that North Reading was also voting on their own... Actually, just a quick, back on the medical marijuana, Bob, like maybe last meeting, there was some discussion that North Reading was also voting on their own version of this, at least as far as zoning.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
It was in this meeting, yes. It was in the notes that come out on Thursday that North Reading was voting on their own zoning for this.
Their own zoning for this is very much in line with ours. They're allowing it in their industrial zones. And their industrial zone just happens to a butter wetlands.
It doesn't beat a butter.
But it's, they're doing exactly what we're doing. They're putting it in a, putting it in an industrial zone.
Yeah, and they have a little section that they were doing besides it, too. They had two, I think they had two or three. They were looking, I don't know if they were choosing or they were going to put them all-
Their layout is so much different.
Yeah.
It really doesn't have a similar center.
I remember looking at the math, what they had, and somebody told me that you're referencing.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I'm wondering if we can do a motion that we approve all of these at once.
I'm going to move Board of Selectmen recommend the subject matters of Articles three through thirteen inclusive of the September twenty ninth, two thousand fourteen, special town meeting warrants.
Do I have a second? Marcy second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
And if I might ask, if, if any of you, I'll go through the chair, wants to have a report more than just what your vote is, please feel free to send that in to me in the next week. So, especially on zoning.
So, fourteen and fifteen, I think, I've-
But that's, I'm asking you as Board of Selectmen, I'm sure as the ZAC, you're going to give a much larger report.
Are you and I talking about fourteen and fifteen?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and the zoning, you know, I don't know if we need a separate report necessarily from the Board of Selectmen. I would just say, I'd just say we vote, vote on it and our vote is, is reflected in the, I think that's sufficient.
Do you want me to jump to November town meeting?
Please.
Last two pages of tonight's.
We're in a roll.
It's really hard to, me to get in this mindset. Luckily, I started this a long time ago. It's four, like in June. When Ray started, he said, "I can't believe we already have warrants out through April." I said, "I had to." This warrant report looks really light to me, and I, I know we're having a September town meeting, but I'm going to really have to ask department heads if I'm missing something. The first three are the same three. We, we always have. I don't think we're going to need a prior year's bill, but I'll leave that up to Sharon. We'll probably leave it on just in case. I don't know if we'll need to amend the budget. We may. There's an, an issue in community services that hasn't been fully ironed out in terms of that regional housing position as to whether it's a wage or an expense. So, there's always something in the way. Article six, I probably haven't talked to you about for a while, and I'll need to catch up with you at least cheaply. The Attorney General, to backtrack a little, a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, town meeting passed an animal control bylaw.
Right.
The Attorney General took quite some time and finally came back and approved it, but said you needed to make some changes to the appeals process. So, right now, there's a three-member board of appeals for this. And so, that's, we've been waiting for town council. That clearly wasn't a high priority, if you will. But it's something we need to do either in November or April. We should really clean this up.
Are these changes or additions to the language?
It will be changes to the current appeals process portion of the bylaw.
So, will we have a, we have to form a committee for that?
I don't think so. I think it'll be administrative, but if it's anything more complex, we'll have to push it off to April and we'll have to go through a process.
Yeah, it seems like you ought to be able to do that in the framework of what we've got.
Jim's the expert on it right now, and I really haven't talked to him about it probably for two months. But from what he described to me, it seemed like paperwork, if you will. The Attorney General's office made a strong suggestion about what they wanted, and I think we can just do that, but we needed that town council to do that for us. We're hoping to have a permanent building committee set up. I'll meet with the bylaw committee on Thursday this week and get an update from them.
Gee, I hope we're getting that.
You remember the, the old bus shelter that I said the problem was solved? Well, you notice the bus shelter's not there yet.
Yes.
I finally wrote a letter to, the real name is Royal, Royal Ahold, over the weekend, and said, "We're going to town meeting. We're taking the land." They have been very difficult and very slow, and it has nothing to do with the fact the store's been busy because of Market Basket the last few weeks. Actually, the manager of the store is very nice and very easy to deal with, but the company back in, you know, Europe is not so easy to deal with. I'm almost thinking they want us to do this now because it caused them to do no work. So, Ray is coming in a little early tomorrow night to meet with Gene and I to craft an article to do this. And all it does is, it gives us the right to put the bus shelter there, to effectively buy eminent domain, maybe for a cost, seek what's called a roadway easement, I think, till he corrects me tomorrow, to allow us to do this.
This is a stop and shop we're going to have to do.
Right in front of stop and shop.
Not in acquisition, but the right to an easement.
Right to an easement. We already have one easement there. We need a different easement for this purpose.
That's still an eminent domain taken?
Um, not clear. It's not clear.
But you usually put that language in.
We might, we might want to put the language in, but again, I'll, I'll leave that.
I think all easements have a, a-
I think they do, yeah.
Just in case.
You know, it's an unfortunate situation of if you were dealing with local business, this would have been cleaned up long ago.
Of course.
The corporation over in Netherlands just doesn't have its potential.
Well, it's not, not their, it's not their top priority, right? Just like, it wasn't your top priority or the prior-
They're trying to get Market Basket shut down.
You're, you're supposed to stop.
They've been dealing with Gene, so I'm surprised it's not the top priority, but somehow it hasn't been.
Market Basket every time.
The Article nine is, is already crafted. The language is already done. CPDC has already voted on zoning bylaw change. It really has nothing to do with the recodification. And this is a standalone issue.
That's a, that's a specific area that they-
And then, I, I've talked to Gene and Jesse, and I know, Marcy, you know, for the last few weeks and months, how to present this. The current thinking is Article ten will be a comprehensive update of the zoning bylaws. Stem to stern, everything not done in September town meeting will be done in Article ten. If Article ten fails for some reason, doesn't get two-thirds for any reason at all, Article three will be a scaled-back version of Article ten that will recodify the zoning and not do anything controversial. Don't ask me what's controversial, but there's a few things like signed bylaws to be discussed tomorrow night. I don't know how-
Though, quite frankly, most of the things that are controversial, we put onto a parking lot to be considered later because we did all agree at the point in time that we were doing this that we were going to be streamlining and modernizing, but not changing, so.
Yeah. So, eleven is more of a fail-safe if you run into trouble with ten.
It's a belt and suspenders approach.
Exactly.
So.
If ten passes, you don't need eleven. If, you know, it could well be that everything of controversy is removed from discussion. I'm thinking like in-law apartments, signed bylaw. Eleven might, might be completely unnecessary, but you're going to have to close this in three weeks, so.
But quite frankly, the accessory apartment discussion needs to be moved forward, needs to be discussed because there's a lot of demand for that type of housing in town. And there's, and it was one of the top items that people had concerns with and were, wanted to move forward.
I've just never seen this construction before of Plan A and then Plan B in succession.
It's happened in the past.
So, the recodification has to happen anyway. Essentially, most of the work that's in there needs to happen anyway. The pieces that are additional incremental work, because I did talk to them about this, would have to do with the, making sure that it's really housekeeping of, of ticking and tying to make sure that the old components tie into the new codification.
You get ten, you don't need eleven. Does eleven undermine ten?
Well, yeah, that's mildly concerning.
That's what I'm worried about.
I think you'd table eleven if ten passed, but does it give people the-
But, but having both of them gives people-
Having eleven on the law.
Gives them a reason to pull it out.
See, I personally don't think that it should, I don't think that it should be on there, and I've told that to Gene before.
And you have three weeks to discuss whether to not throw that out there.
We could throw it out.
What I believe we should do, what, what I think we should do is, are we going to have anything? Are we going to have Turning Point devices for September meeting?
Yeah.
So, if we have Turning Point, what I believe we should do is actually to have a component, we're doing a presentation on the zoning bylaw.
Just do a presentation on it.
Is, but, but to do, to actually do voting and, and say to people, are there any, where are the components that you have concerns about? Where do you see that you would need to vote this down? We have time between now and November. Let's-
Let's clean it up.
It's using town meeting as a deliberative discussion.
And then we have everybody say, has said, "Yes, you had enough open forums. You've agreed that you need to," like, we lay it out, and you get to the next meeting, you go, "Okay, this is what you, you said just two months ago. How can you say that you now need to vote this down?"
What's our closing date for this?
You're going to have to close the warrant on the twenty-third, which is before the September town meeting.
Oh, that's before the special, so we won't have that opportunity.
However, well before this goes into print for town meeting in November, you can write under Article eleven, "This will be tabled with no other information. There's no need for this article for the following reason." So, but you, if you don't have it here, you can't add it.
Yeah.
So, you put it in there, close it, and then you determine after the fact that it's not, it's superfluous.
Use, use the verbiage to say it makes-
But I certainly see your point. If you offer both, both full options.
If you offer both, I think, I think you're inviting a vote down is the problem.
Yeah.
And there's no way to make eleven more, I want to say vague, but more generalized, so that it-
Well, the other option, and I, I'll have to go, go back. I think this works. You'll need to close the January fifth special town meeting, and I think you'll be able to do that at a time when this will have already passed or failed. So, you could do recodification on January fifth.
That's more than thought.
That's true.
I think.
January fifth, we have a special meeting?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you be able to?
That's for the chart.
I have to look at the, when you close that.
Zimbabwe.
How long is it?
It's, it's like, this one is like six to eight weeks in advance, so I think a special is tighter, four weeks. Shouldn't be a problem, but I really want to check. I've-
You really kind of want to get people in choice.
I've got my September and November time lines here. I didn't bring my January. The, the last article is the West Street Historic District. I had a discussion with the chair this morning. I don't know how many of you know what's going on, so I'll just update you. The West Street Historic District has filed with the state to broaden the West Street Historic District to include Summer App.
That filing has happened?
That filing has happened. That filing has been discussed with town council, and that filing has happened.
A portion or all of it?
It's not clear to me because I haven't seen the paperwork.
Summer App goes all the way across Main Street.
I saw a draft. It was a large portion.
Okay.
But not, certainly not both sides. It was to the-
So, is it running all the way up to Main?
It runs all the way to Woburn Street.
In the other direction?
So, Woburn to Summer?
I don't think so. I don't think it goes to the other side of Woburn.
Woburn or Willoughby, Wom, or West, whatever.
I don't think it goes the whole length. It goes Woburn to somewhere.
That whole stretch.
Middle Street Bridge area, maybe. But I only saw a draft. I don't know. I haven't seen the final paperwork yet.
And who's presenting this? A petition or a board?
This will be the West Street Historical District Commission.
I guess they have the power.
That is going to ask you to sponsor the article, I would assume. And the article would be to change-
Can't they put their own, I-
Um, they could.
I get nutty about this stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm the only one, but when I see Board of Selectmen on an article, it implies we either generated it and intend to support it.
And that's why I think it's important that you vote also, and it's in print. So, if, if you're sponsoring it for someone and then you're voting two to three to support it or whatever, then people will know, okay, they were courteous enough to sponsor it.
Any board can put it on themselves by a simple majority vote of the board.
If I were them, I'd take it to the net. I wouldn't want anyone else's sponsorship.
Yeah, I, I think that it makes more sense for them to sponsor it.
So, they, they applied last week with the state. There's a whole complex process of public hearing and notification. And they did it last week in order to hit the November town meeting. And again-
They did a public hearing last week?
No, they didn't. No, they started the paperwork.
Oh, they started the paperwork. Oh, okay.
They have sixty days to have the public hearing. They have not scheduled it yet. There's a meeting one of these Mondays either. I think it's a week, next Monday.
They should be ready though for the November meeting.
But we'll have closed this.
You'll get much more information, including an actual article.
That'd be nice.
You know, which, you know, I haven't seen yet, so they just came in this morning and said, "Yes, we do want to request this." So, I said, "Okay, I'll just advise the board. Obviously, we'll need to talk."
So, this is just a placeholder?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we were to vote on it, we'll, we'll essentially vote on it before we've actually had a public hearing.
We don't have to think of it as a, to recommend.
Yes, you will, you will be, well, you'll be, if, you'll be closing a warrant with it on there.
Why do we have to close this warrant earlier than-
Closing it is fine, but- There's sponsorship, there's closure, and then, then there's who's going to present it, and those are three different entities. We, we are, we have to close the warrant.
Why do we have to close the warrant so early? We just closed the warrant tonight.
It's only maybe a week earlier than usual because you don't happen to meet the first week of October.
It's fairly early for the fall. It's specified in the charter.
It's in the charter.
But any board, as I said before, can put it down with a majority vote, I believe, and then can, we can elect to support or not support any article. Generally, our recent history has been to support articles we have our name under, you know, unless there's some reason we're not doing it under our own.
But you have to vote to put it into the, into the-
We're compelled to put anything on that's legitimately presented either by petition or by other boards. Those have to go on.
Whether we vote for or not.
Whether we agree or not, we have to close.
Secondary to the discussion.
So, those are the only articles I know of. And then January, we're preparing for a Monday night, I think it's January fifth, Tuesday, January sixth, and Wednesday, January seventh, special town meeting on the charter.
Three nights in a row.
Well.
This is all charter?
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
And the deadline for that, much like the library last year, is very tight in order to hit the local election.
We don't want to have two.
Right. So, I'll meet with the Charter Commish, Committee, I think it's on the fifteenth.
Bob, do those changes have to be mailed to every voting resident in town?
I think so. That's a really good question.
I think they do.
That's my inclination, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe you and I talked about that.
Impact for that.
Yeah. I, that sounds right. To every household. I'm not sure about each person.
After the town meeting votes.
Yeah.
So, those dates, just they're immovable. Those dates have to be-
We have to be done by the eighth or the seventh. I can't remember. And it seemed foolish to try to do it the week between Christmas and New Year's. So, the fifth seemed like the soonest reasonable date. And I don't remember when you need to close that warrant, but I'll say it's late November, early December. And I, you know, we'll get a lot more on this. I've only been to three meetings, so I really can't say, but Bill Brown, who's in my office this morning, said he's becoming much more confident that this is doable for those dates. He wasn't that confident a month or two ago.
This is Bill Brown talking or Alan Hill?
Uh, Bill. Alan's okay with it for now, too. I think, I'll, I'll certainly give you a draft after their next one or two meetings. Ray is going to attend their second meeting in the future. After that, I'll probably give you a draft and show you where they are. I would say, with a few exceptions, they're really not doing anything controversial. They're just trying to clean up language. They're a definition of cleanup, and mine might be a little different, but they're trying.
Now, has Ray finally settled this question of their scope?
I hope so. Uh, they're not asking anymore.
I think so.
One issue we have not tackled on purpose is the Light Department.
Yeah.
And that's for future discussion that you'll have to be part of. The options range from all kinds of inclusionary language to exclude them from the charter completely. And that's obviously a future discussion we'll have to have. And it, you can put it in this recodification, if you will. You can put it off. You don't have to do it in January fifth, but the opportunity's there.
Seems to make sense.
If we wanted to move out on that, at least get a sniff at what the range of possibilities were, when would it make sense, calendar wise?
I think, I think Ray is probably going to meet with the Charter Committee on the twenty-second. So, I might have something for you in your next meeting on the twenty-third of September. I might be able to give you a more complete update and maybe some paperwork. Because I don't think he's going to talk to them about the Light Department that night, but that depends what happens in the meeting on the fifteenth. They may say, "We want to talk about it." I would suggest putting it on your agenda probably in October. You're booked on Feb, on September twenty-third, but if we put that on your agenda in October, that's plenty of time to get back to them.
I'd be inclined to do so.
They're, they're meeting weekly except for holidays and town meeting on Monday nights through charter, through early December.
At either this town meeting or by November, is there going to be at all an update on the library and where that stands?
That'd be sporting, I think.
Uh, could be.
It seems like it would make sense to have that.
Probably not September.
Sure.
Yeah, probably November makes the most sense.
It just seems like we're spending a bunch of money and people haven't heard of anything except when they're asking for money. It would probably be best to actually do a presentation and say, "This is the status of it, and we're not asking for more money."
Are they moved, are they moved into their new space?
The latest plan I saw had the library closing on her about the first of October, to be moved in second or third week of October.
So, that's moved, so that's a moving date.
It has. It's moved a couple of times.
Because that was like an August date.
Yeah, it was, it was, well, way back when it was. It was September first. It's moved out.
It's the most fluid schedule I've ever seen.
Yeah. Yeah, and I couldn't-
Apparently, there's not that-
Milestones coming up.
Fluid, fluidity with the Strategic Planning Committee. Different topic.
So, I, I think a November update would be very important, and I think the Finance Committee is all over that in terms of wanting to know what's going on. I think we're having a meeting Thursday morning at seven thirty to discuss that, so. We actually haven't spent a huge amount of money yet. Less than a million.
I would hope we haven't spent a huge amount of money.
Well, there's a lot of money going into design, certainly, but, you know, out of eighteen million, we're still scratching the surface. Real money starts getting spent November, December, January, when we start getting into construction.
You going to break rounds, November, December, January?
Soon as everything freezes. Yeah, exactly.
Well, they can do that.
Okay.
All right.
It's more expensive that way.
Let's see, next on our agenda is preparation for the financial forum next week on the tenth.
Yeah, I don't know if the board, tomorrow night the finance committee meets to discuss this, so it's kind of hard for me to give you much in advance, but if the board has any thoughts, our, our state senator and two state reps are in that night, approximately seven thirty, they'll come early. I've told them we're going to block the doors, so there'll be no getting out early. And more state aid was, was necessary. But they legitimately want to know, aside from money, what can we do for you, what's your agenda, what's your mission, how can you help?
Will this, Mark, will this play off of your last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so you've got, you know, obviously the.
A white sheet.
Yeah, so we've got the white sheets, and then there were some priorities.
Yeah.
The people who attended were able to give, I think what I'm opposed to the financial forum night is that if we can get a bigger audience, it'd be great to kind of review these and kind of get a sense of what's going on. Really give our state legislators information on where we see priorities, where we see some needs. Couple of things really stand out, you know, that, a lot of it relating to school kinds of issues. Let's see if that's kind of where things stay, as well as innovative ideas toward twenty twenty. Those were kind of the things that people wanted to.
Put some recreation things in there.
They're, sorry, yeah, I didn't mean to say schools, the schools and recreation deals popped up.
Kid things.
Yeah, yeah, really, very much so, kid things.
Do you?
The intent of this, the second meeting is to talk more about sources of revenue. So if that was uses of revenue, this one is meant to be sources, so it's extremely appropriate that our state.
I told them.
This could be a short meeting.
But more on that topic, we, we wanted to devote some of the evening to have, maybe this is putting them on the spot, but when you, government's always a little bit of a mystery to me at that level. It'd be interesting to hear, after we present these, these summaries from our last meeting, what sorts of ranges of options are available, is that an appropriate use of the evening from, from our legislators?
To fund it, you mean?
Fund, support, uh, is there anything that, that on the state side, either in terms of collateral activities? Roads, roads, road funding to do some of the, I just don't even know the questions to ask, but if you throw up, we have on the board, we have some plans for, for recreation, we have some plans, aspirational goals to do this, that, and the other thing. Turn it around, what, how can the state help us in this regard, we need another questions to ask. Rather than necessarily devoting entirely to just fundraising, where will the funds come from? That make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think it's worth getting their feedback.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rather than sitting, sit there, watch us, you know, debate ourselves.
Yeah, and then say, can you guys help us once we get to a certain place?
Put it back on.
Why don't you, we say, how can you help us?
Yeah.
You know, here are, I mean, I, I, you know, I think that that exercise presented.
Prep them with that.
And they've, they've asked me, what do you want us to do that night, and I said, well, after Wednesday night, I'll have a better idea.
Bring the checkbook.
We can advance, but they already know that, what else, they said it's going to bounce.
They said it's going to bounce.
Seriously, it may not be necessarily a checkbook, it might be influence or insight, or program connection. Other programs, we need to know it exists or dovetail into this.
These, the politicians will be there, it'll be all state reps.
Yeah.
So Brad Jones and Jim Dwight and Jason Lewis.
Maybe there's some levels that we can hit that we're not aware of.
And what I'll show the finance committee tomorrow night is we had a management meeting with department heads and assistant department heads in August. And they did the same exercise as the people in that room did, given the list, so they didn't get to make up their own. It's pretty interesting what they voted, these are the boots on the ground. They didn't, they didn't agree with a lot of what volunteers saw. They, they see things differently.
That would be an interesting.
Yeah. Now, I didn't have perfect attendance at the meeting, it was August, but it was, you know, a dozen people or so. There were some overlaps and there were some differences.
It would be really interesting to lay those.
Their flavor was much more to be real generic social services. They see that, volunteers don't know how much of that goes on in this community. Now, whether the government should be doing it or someone else do, we all see it, so it was interesting.
Well, the people that were in that, the volunteers that were in that room, aren't tuned into that.
Right.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's just.
Well, they wouldn't be, right, you're getting social services, that's not generally something that you get volunteers to help with.
So here's a silly thought, just to pick on that one. If we decided to do something like a public-private venture with social services, is there anything that the state has or could suggest to help the help?
That's the kind of question that I would like to ask.
The kind of questions we want to have.
Right, yeah, I, I want to know, what are your hot buttons, what are the things where there's opportunities? And I'll tell you, one of them, they're going to say complete streets, lucky or not. They're going to say, you know, that's just a hot button coming right from the federal government, there's plenty of money. If you want to have pedestrian, walkable, bikeable paths, it gets you all the money you need. But I want other examples of that, right, all right, that, that's one, that's fine, we'll do that, what else do you have?
Wonder if we can create better, plant beds for trees with, when, when doing some of those crosswalks.
How about putting the trees we want in when you give us millions of dollars? But they're a pretty creative group. It's not going back ten years ago to the, to the days of earmarks, we could actually ask, I need four hundred grand for this project, I don't really feel like I want to go there. It, it has crept back a little, as opposed to not at all for a few years, but that's not my style.
No, if there's a program or something that preexists, we're just ignorant to, that's the thing I'm trying to.
And there's got, I bet there is.
I bet there's hundreds of them, we don't know.
We're off in our own little bubble.
And I'm curious to know where they represent a pretty wide area. What are the best thoughts you get from other, your other communities that are in the same position we are?
Well, that goes to regionalization, is there something that they can help us with in regionalization?
Yes. And then one thing that would be tremendous is if we can get a good turnout to come to the meeting. We've got a nice big space in the village multipurpose room. I've sent articles to both papers, just kind of an announcement.
So how do we get them there, what do you think?
We're having food. Food's going to be better than even last time, last time was just a test run.
I don't know, that food was pretty good.
It was pretty good. I heard from the school committee, you got lobster? No, that was the finance committee that got lobster.
We could serve other comestibles, but we'd have to card people at the door.
We're going to invite all town meeting members through lists that we have, this is social services, or this community list that we're all sending email out to as well.
Yeah, that's this Thursday.
Friends. I think Nancy Doctor suggested we create a couple of signs to put up on.
Yeah, and we were trying to think of how to hit the fall street fair, but that's not just Redding people, so I'm not sure if it's quite as important.
Yeah, right.
Well, if we have a town of Redding, do we have a town of Redding booth?
Not really. Different entities have it, library, border health, our casa. The firefighters aren't making chili, so we can't do it there.
Chili?
They're, they're on shift that day, the two best chili makers. No, they didn't do it last year.
Amazing, I want to share with the rest of the fire department their recipe.
That's exactly right.
I can't blame them then.
They did, they did suggest, though, that we have a chili off, as a whole separate event, sometime in October or November.
I like that idea.
Plenty of other towns do it, have all the fire departments in the area compete. We'd be glad to show them how to do it right. I said, well, in the sense of regionalization, that might be a nice idea.
That actually might really have some possibilities, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Some of these, some of these guys have a little, you know, filet in there, in their chili.
That's a, that's a big deal, the.
Oh, yeah.
Those, those chili things.
Used to have a client in Texas that had, I don't know, something as long as this table, he had his own little grill. He hooked it up to his camper and went to different, I don't know, whatever.
Well, he's not alone, there's a lot of that.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's.
Texas and.
And these, our firefighters do travel around New England to contest, and they often win, not always. I saw a picture of them down in Connecticut a year or two ago. It was packed, so you never know.
Any other questions on the financial forum?
So if, if you have any, I'll.
That's what's mixed up for us, is the financial forum, right?
Yeah, I'll give you feedback from tomorrow night's discussion, I'll send you out through the chair, whatever it is they decide. And if you individually want to email me with any thoughts, I can then share them with Mark.
Any other discussion, or don't we move on? Town manager goal.
That could be a long one, can I just ask, just a courtesy, to approve a ad hoc committee for this naming thing? Is that a hard one?
I don't think it's hard.
But it's not on the agenda, right?
The question is, for example, the naming group in the high, at the school, I think it's nine or ten people. How many, how many people are you thinking, and what's composition, what do you think?
I think that's where all the work is going on, I think we put a small group together, half a dozen.
I think you could do it under topics not reasonably anticipated.
I think there's a forum for it, did you have a particular construction you were thinking of, John, or just a committee to be determined by whom?
Probably should do a promotion the next time.
I'm open to that.
If it's an ad hoc committee, you'll want to advertise that and, and publish it for your twenty-third.
All I'm saying is, if the idea to go forward with an ad hoc committee can be agreed on, then the format can come, I, you know, I, I'll work on that and then bring it back at our next meeting and finalize.
I'm okay.
But I can't go start doing the work.
No objection. So you're proposing to form an ad hoc committee, construction be determined later?
Yeah, what I'm suggesting is that if we agree in principle that we need an ad hoc committee to do this, I'll go do the work and report back.
Well, yes.
How's that?
No, that, that works fine.
Is that okay?
One thought is, do, is there make any sense to tie it into the naming committee, this may be a really silly thought. To tie it into the one at the schools level, they've already got.
Oh, boy.
Or expand that, or expand that to be beyond its current.
I, I don't, I, you know.
All right.
I had one bad.
I'm happy to leave that open for discussion.
Maybe we can talk that, talk about that at the next, at the next, we should have an actual agenda item on this and, and talk about it.
In the same, in the same reason we have one building committee that we're trying to get to, this is analogous in that regard.
Sort of a moot point at that point, they've already named everything that can be named.
The similarities are differences, I think.
What form would the motion take?
Uh, right now, just, you can take a sense of the committee, I guess.
Just a sense, just a sense of the committee, we're, we're saying, yeah.
Of the board.
Saying, okay, go.
Go ahead, go, go, put your proposal together, and we'll talk about it next time.
I don't think it needs a motion.
We don't need a move.
If you guys are good with me to, you know, put something together to finalize at our next meeting,
Sure.
we'll get it on the agenda, and I think it'll be fast. And I'll look at considerations like, you know, some kind of connection to the school thing, although.
Even a Redding Hall of Fame would have, maybe have, but you're talking about Redding buildings, not just athletics.
Well, if you're going to do it, you might as well do it, I mean, it's, there's more than just athletic.
I agree. Town manager Hall of Fame.
Town manager Hall of Fame, there you go.
Limited candidate pool, but.
So far.
Name last human slave.
All right, on the town manager goals, I have heard from one point nine of you. Kevin being the point nine, John Arena being the one.
I, I, I will tell you, I had the best intentions and.
It's, it's not easy.
I just.
It's not easy.
It's, it's long is part of the problem.
I had to do it, it took me two hours to go through it, and then I typed it into itself, it takes a while.
And you don't have to vote on every single subarticle, as John did in some cases.
But you have to think about them all, so.
But you may want to. It's up to you how you approach it.
I thought when I went through it the second time, that's when I had the best balance of what's important and what's urgent. Because you go through it the first time and you tend to think of those in the same dimension.
As being the same.
It's important and urgent, but you can't have everything be a one-one, so then you go back and say, well, this is really important stuff, but it's not urgent.
Can, can you explain this optional, because I didn't quite get that, and that, I was getting hung up on that as I started trying to.
I put down the word optional, because in my opinion, I thought, that's not something that we have to do.
Okay.
West Street is not optional, because the state's already doing it.
Right.
So it was as black and white as I could possibly figure out.
So optional are things that you think are, you know, they're on here, but you don't necessarily think you need.
Whereas some things, they've already got a head of steam, you're not going to change the zoning.
Right.
Whether you like it or not, it's going to hit some town meeting and so on.
Yeah.
There's a lot there, but.
There is a lot.
I, I know you know these words, but limited bandwidth.
And urgent is a subset of important, it has to be important to be urgent?
No.
Not necessarily.
No, there's, no, you can have something that's, that's small, but has to be done right away.
It's important that we get the charter recod, recodified. It's important, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow.
But if it's urgent that it'd be done tomorrow, better damn well be.
An urgent thing is almost always important, an important thing is not always urgent.
We might have something for the fall street fair that's, that's urgent, but it's not that important, so we might not do it. But if we're going to do it, we better do it by the seventh.
Yeah, the chili.
I see.
Chili.
So I guess the footnote here's.
It's kind of urgent, but I guess it's not that important.
For you three point one persons who haven't gotten your input in.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Please do so.
Summer's over.
It did take two hours, I, I did spend most of Monday morning.
And you're right, you, you got to go do it. The same thing, I looked through it all, and then I started to rate it all, and then went back again, I'm like, oh, we'll change that one.
My thinking was.
I thought you were a point nine.
There's two I didn't, I, I still have to get homework on.
Said I want to get back to on this.
Yeah, there was two that I, I didn't do my homework on, and I wanted to look at it a little better.
And my, my coaching is go through it with an eye towards, it can't all be high priority. Force yourself to deprioritize some stuff, so we don't kill ourselves.
That's the other reason I want to go back.
Bob kills himself.
And just to remind you, and you'll get more details, we're not meeting on the sixteenth as a formal board, but we've agreed to set up working sessions, some of you are getting emails on that from some of the department heads. I will say, the month of August, it was never the case that more than about two or three departments were around, so we're just now kind of regathering.
Well, I, you know, I'm a little concerned about, you know, a tight window and sudden urgency after, and, and then all of a sudden, it's like, you know, one person's important, but the other one isn't.
Yeah, I would tailor this.
I'm not particularly happy with that.
The meeting on the sixteenth, in my mind, was to look at the results of the goals, the priorities, and start the discussion as opposed to finish anything or urgently do anything. We don't have that yet, which is fine, that doesn't mean, but it's still an opportunity, if it's important, for any of these groups to meet. Doesn't mean they all have to meet on the sixteenth, it's just, you all indicated you were probably in town, and you were had, you were willing to come in and spend some time.
Yep.
And, and certainly well before that, I'll have to get a stronger sense from you about when are you available that day? Available at four in the afternoon, at six at night, whatever it is, and we'll try to set some things up.
Well.
My only feedback is.
Our meeting is not, is way in advance.
Yeah, and I saw.
And it was laid out without dialogue, really.
Yeah, there's really no context, and I'd much rather have both of the board members there than have one of us. And my, my problem is, I can't do it on a Thursday, I've got a bunch of other stuff going on.
Well, you know, it may be a little heavy-handed, you keep a pretty tight business schedule to insist on a daytime meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a little over the top, if you ask me.
Well, and that, that's strategic planning, right?
Yeah.
That one is impossible that it's one thing in one group. It's going to have to be lots of things and lots of subgroups. It's gonna have to be lots of things and lots of subgroups. You're gonna have lots of strategic plans, but the question is.
The subgroups are, I mean, you only have, you have five people. You have three professional people and two volunteers. So how many subgroups can you have with five people?
And that's why I think that group especially has to look at the goals and from that extract, you know, what their mission is.
Given that, I, I think it's.
I'm gonna suggest.
I think it's nonproductive to have, you know, four of the five people available and.
And I, I know some of the groups have met, most of the groups have not met.
I'm gonna suggest that we actually postpone it, cause it's, it's gonna be abbreviated meeting other.
Well, you know, I think it's.
Have it be on the 16th, as originally proposed.
Ever.
I mean, I don't have any problem with it at another time, I mean, I, I just, I mean, there was two tiny selections of time.
Right, yeah, seven in the morning and one in the afternoon or something.
Yeah, no, it was like 11:30 in the morning on one day and three o'clock in the afternoon on another day.
Is it, is it perhaps?
And you work for a living, all day, all day, every day.
Most of the night, too, so. I'll, I'm gonna write Ruth back and suggest we just postpone it till the 16th, cause it'd be easier from a planning perspective.
All right.
Well, I think we just have to take a leadership position and.
Or maybe we just move forward with all four other people to meet.
Well, that's John's point, but. I think you need a specific agenda and reason to meet. What are you gonna accomplish?
And we don't have that yet.
Well, I haven't seen it, I'm not part of it, although a couple of you have asked me to join that one and I probably should.
I think you, I.
I think you gotta be there.
I think you gotta be there, Bob.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that.
So many things flow out of that.
I just assumed you were helping that one.
We, we limited it to one person per, I mean, only one assignment for each person. But as a practical matter, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, I think, maybe, maybe, maybe there's an opportunity to rebalance or, and recalibrate the folks that are assigned to those. So that you line up with people who are the best person for it and have the, have the time available for it.
Yeah, we have a group of two, for instance, that's a DPW director and the town accountant, I think they're doing communication. I'm like, hmm.
How did that happen?
And I can tell you, we have, we have a group of two with me and Gene who are spending our time on zoning bylaw, so really, not a lot getting done on that one.
I don't know if any of you got the first DPW monthly newsletter last week, but hopefully you did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Good start, yeah.
Yeah.
They better talk about West Street next.
Yep.
All right, do we wanna go to minutes?
Move that the board of selectmen approve the minutes of June 10th, 2014 is amended.
Second.
Any discussion or changes?
Paula, do you have the message that I sent you? Cause I can't log in, I, I can't log in here, cause I've got a new computer.
I didn't bring.
I do have changes, but unfortunately don't have, if I can get into my email, then I could see them, but I can't get into my email.
Yeah, my paper.
I believe my phone's dead, maybe my phone's not dead. Do you know what the code is to get in? Oh, perfect.
Any other comments? Prove me wrong. You're in. Okay, no other comments, all those in favor of the.
I, I need to open up my notes here.
Oh, we have mark notes.
I actually do have some, some.
Try it again?
Yeah. Actually, I don't think I do. All right, for the 10th, page three. Discussion action items. There's a you that should be a she related to maternity leave. So town accountant Sharon Angstrom noted that the PC card started right before she left for maternity leave.
This is on the 10th?
What?
This is on the 10th?
Yeah, on the 10th, page three. Discussion action items.
I can't fix it up.
I know.
Actually, I could here.
No, don't worry about it. Ooh, I don't know if it works. No, don't worry.
They're all the same, all of them are the same.
Uh, the other thing is, in the reports and comments section, related to Oakland Road property, there is a comment that I indicated we need to make it clear to the stool committee that the property belongs to the board of selectmen and the disposition is the selectmen's decision, but I don't recall saying that. I thought it might have been Dan or Kevin or John that brought that up, I don't.
Where are you again?
Well, no, you made a comment, I think it was more along the lines of, it could be made available, but only through the selectmen. Do you remember saying that?
I don't, but.
No, that Dan, Dan did that, in reference to the minutes on page one, say as much, right?
Well, yeah, that is the motion I proposed, there was some discussion around it and I can't remember exactly who said what, but.
Uh, well, I mean, if you think that I said it, maybe I did, so.
I, I, just as a side comment, the letter was significantly softer than the motion.
Oh, good.
Significantly.
Probably better, yes.
Wasn't really what the board voted.
They got the message.
I hope so.
They definitely got the message.
Okay.
Any other changes?
No.
Okay, so.
Paula already has the changes that I voted, so it was a, a you instead of a sh, a she instead of a you.
All those, so all those in favor of the amendments on June 10th, five zero.
Move the board of selectmen approve the minutes of July 30th, 2014 is amended.
Uh, second. June 14th, all those in favor?
Move the board of selectmen approve the minutes of August 12th, 2014 is amended.
Second.
I, I did have some changes in this one. That was related to the, the, the FinCom amendment.
Okay.
So what I said is I, I noted that I'm proposing an amendment, because I was the one who was actually said we should have this, on page 21 of the handout related to the Finance Committee. This would add a sentence under duties it gives them, so that was the original.
I'm sorry, what page you on?
Is it 6C2?
Page two.
Yeah.
Page two.
6C2.
Three point, three point.
Marcy West noted.
Yeah. Yeah, the Finance Committee didn't propose this, so I don't want it to say that, because I was the one that proposed it, because the Finance Committee, the, that was, after we started looking at this, we found out that the, that it was an oversight.
So Marcy West proposed.
Right, and then I added a sentence at the end, cause it's an oversight and it's fixing an oversight in the initial wording that allows them to investigate things.
Okay, any other changes? All those in favor? Five zero.
Are there any suggested changes to the executive session, if not, we can approve them here. Move the board of selectmen approve the executive session minutes of August 2nd, 2014 is written.
Uh, second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call. Hang on, Paul, I did send you some changes, I think, to this.
Oh, the executive?
Oh, then we need to approve them.
Um, hang on, let me make sure.
Yeah, what's the.
See if they're in there.
Twelve minutes.
I think he just said, uh, the eight, two, first.
No, they're not in executive, okay, we're fine, she's already got mine.
All right.
All right, any changes to the.